The time is six o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to... We are going to begin this meeting with the committee of the whole agenda, and we have two proclamations.
Thank you, Mayor. The first is a proclamation from Junior Achievement. Whereas the City of Moline recognizes Junior Achievement of the Heartlands' purpose to inspire and prepare young people to succeed in a global economy, whereas Junior Achievement of the Heartlands...
If you ever want to wipe down your laptop or phone...
...to become the next generation of productive employees and self-sufficient citizens to ensure the economic prosperity of Moline, whereas it is fitting for Moline to support the goal of Junior Achievement of the Heartland, we encourage the continuing partnership of business, education, and community in achieving these set goals. Now therefore, Stephanie Acre, Mayor of Moline, does hereby proclaim official recognition of April 2nd, 2020 as Junior Achievement Day.
Thank you, Janine.
Thank you. And the second proclamation is from the Boys and Girls Club. Whereas the young people of Moline are tomorrow's leaders, and whereas there are four Boys and Girls Club organizations in the Quad Cities that serve more than 700 young people annually, whereas Boys and Girls Club organizations in Moline help ensure young people have the proof, supported, pleased to spend time, will provide them with quality youth development programs, and whereas the Boys and Girls Club of the Mississippi Valley will celebrate National Boys and Girls Club Week with some 4,000 clubs and over 2 million more children and teens nationwide. Now therefore, Stephanie Acre, Mayor of Moline, does hereby proclaim March 30th through April 3rd, 2020, as Boys and Girls Club Week.
Thank you very much, Janine.
You're welcome.
Just kind of housekeeping. The... Please set their microphones to mute unless you speak, because we're getting quite a bit of background. Ah, that's much better. Thank you very much. Oh, no, you're still doing it.
Mayor, I agree.
I wish to accept or to approve the electronic attendance.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
Alderman Schoonmaker has joined. I'm having a little trouble with the web setting, so I'm just on my phone, but I'm working on it.
Thank you very much, Alderman Schoonmaker. Alderman Moyer?
Yes, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of Second Ward Alderman David Parker, Third Ward Alderman Mike Went, Fourth Ward Alderman Dick Potter, Sixth Ward Alderman Kevin Schoonmaker, Seventh Ward Alderman Mike Waldron at the Committee of the Whole and Council meetings of March 24, 2020.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion by Alderman Moyer and a second by Alderman Berg. Is there any discussion on this motion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Some carries. Thank you. Okay, so now everybody's participating. Are there any questions on the agenda this evening?
Your Honor?
Yes.
On council, on the council agenda, number two, can we pull that from the consent agenda, please?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Number two, Council Bill Resolution 1035, 2020.
Yes.
Thank you. I have two others this evening. I want to add two informationals. One will be led by Carol Barnes discussing our adjustments to expected revenues, and the second will be led by Dirk Price discussing our I-74 bridge loan process. Without hearing any other questions on the agenda, we'll begin with the item...
Your Honor?
Yes.
Your Honor, can we also pull number three from the consent agenda? I'm sorry.
Item number three from the consent agenda of the council agenda is Council Resolution 1036, 2020.
Yes.
Thank you.
Your Honor? This is JD. I don't know if you can hear me. I'd like to also, just under other, I'd like to draw your attention to the continuity of operations plan that I had Allison email to you a little bit ago. If I can do that.
Are you going to do that as an informational, JD?
I can do it either way, Your Honor. As another or an informational.
Oh, okay. Is it something we need to vote on?
Um, I don't, I guess I don't think so.
All right, we'll just do it as an informational, another informational.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we're still getting some background noise. Does everybody that's remoting in, including the individuals in the Committee of the Whole, do you have your microphones muted right now?
Mine was, but I had to unmute to tell you it was muted.
Thank you. Okay, it sounds quieter now. So let's start with item one, Temporary Sidewalk Modifications. That'll be presented by Chris Mathias. Chris, are you on?
Yeah, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So yes, this is a sidewalk variance request for a delay in the installation of sidewalks at 510 Valley View Drive. That is ORA Orthopedics. As you can see on my map that was attached, this is a... The frontage that we're talking about is actually the south end of this property, up against the Frontage Road that's up against John Deere Road. So the first thing I'll say is you have an attachment in your packet on the cost of that sidewalk that came to $53,000. That was our estimate on how much it would cost with the retaining wall, with the grading work crossing through that driveway now. That was at $8 a square foot. We think that should probably be at $10 a square foot. And it should have been a five-foot sidewalk that was bid. It was only a four-foot sidewalk. But really, that cost, instead of being $53,000, should be something more like $67,000. $67,200, to be exact, is our projection for the cost of the sidewalk. Now, I did get a question from Alderman Went on recently in 2017, there was a sidewalk installed on 7th Street, where I know the mayor and Dara Press and some other city staff reached out to some of the business on that sidewalk, and there was an offer to participate. Anyway, this segment of sidewalk that was installed along 7th Street, which would have been just ORA's share of that sidewalk, that was a $35,000 job. It came to $35,600. At that time, the city was offering to a 75 percent contribution to that. So it would have come to the city contributing $26,000, and ORA would have contributed $8,900 to that share. But I know, I know that was never done. I don't believe ORA ever contributed to that. But I know that was information that Alderman Went wanted for tonight's hearing. So anyway, staff recommendation as far as this sidewalk to the south, it's not connecting to anything. It really doesn't, in my opinion, as a staff person, it doesn't serve much of a purpose because we've already got sidewalks on the west and east side of this property. So staff's recommendation would be to grant a temporary, at least a temporary stay on the sidewalk because they are, they are talking to the state and considering purchasing this right of way, and that's something that will take a year or two probably to be handled from the state. So I would take any questions that you have, though.
Just for clarification, is it staff's recommendation that ORA not contribute anything to the sidewalk fund as well as being allowed a variance on the installation of this additional sidewalk? So they're not going to pay for the 7th Street sidewalk or install the other sidewalk? Is that correct?
Yeah. The staff recommendation was really just looking at that variance request, which I think is warranted. We want to talk about what they should contribute to a sidewalk fund. Then, like I said, I mean, I'd be probably, I would be more looking at what that 7th Street version cost. And if you wanted, if you wanted to ask me as a staff person what that's valued at, I mean, it was that, the sidewalk that was installed on 7th Street, that was a $35,000 project. But if we were going to be looking at something we could put into a fund, my recommendation would be something more like that number and not the $67,000 number that it would cost to install a sidewalk on Frontage Road.
So I'll open it up for discussion. Does anyone have any questions for Chris? Alderman Berg?
Chris, is this something that could wait until, waiting for a couple of months until we kind of get past kind of what's going on right now?
Well, it's triggered by the fact that they have development and they want their certificate of occupancy. So if you wanted to wait a few months, my suggestion would be to approve the variance with some kind of condition to bring it back at some time, and then that'll buy them the months that you would need or that the business would need to at least open and get their seat out.
Thank you. Do you have any questions, Alderman Berg? Or Alderman Went?
I'd like to move that we allow them to have a variance in exchange for contribution of the $35,000 into the sidewalk fund. We'll start with that, and then I'll just make an explanation in a minute.
Just for clarification, is that a permanent variance or a temporary variance?
It would be a permanent variance.
Thank you. Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Second.
We have a second by Alderman Moyer. So we have a motion by Alderman Went and a second by Alderman Moyer to approve a permanent variance with the investment of $35,000 into our sidewalk fund. Is there any further discussion? Alderman Went?
I think that we made some modifications to how we did variances when it came to sidewalks, and this was if an organization wanted to forego putting in sidewalks, that this option of contributing to the sidewalk fund was the appropriate avenue. But in exchange for it, we give them a permanent variance, so that if we ever down the road wound up putting something in, it would be at our costs. Obviously, if they wind up getting the road down there dedicated or vacated to them, then that won't be an issue. But with this and the taxpayer money that was all put in on 7th Street, I think that this is a fair amount, rather than requiring them to pay all the way up to that $60-some thousand dollars. I think 35 is a reasonable number that staff came up with.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or questions? All those in favor of the motion presented by Alderman Went, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. So Chris, that's the direction from council. Are you comfortable with going back to ORA with that?
I am.
Thank you so much. The next item is also, Chris, this is a deed of dedication, 15th Avenue Project?
Yes, this is one, this is our trenchless water main project. As you know, red water is something that's very important to the council as far as addressing all those issues throughout the city. So we are, we need a couple deeds of dedication here, and we also need a couple easements at the end of this street. So at the end of 15th Avenue, you've got a storm sewer that really goes down deep into that ravine. So we've got three easements from those properties that we can get in there and maintain that storm sewer going forward. Of course, put in a new storm sewer and then maintain it going forward. And then we have two deeds of dedication just to square the road off. It's a very, it's kind of informal at the end of this road where it just kind of ends without much real, it's not squared off properly. So that's why we acquired a little property there. So we would just ask for your acceptance of these, and staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg, a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Chris.
Yes.
The next item is, sorry, we have...
We do have Kenneth Brooks that appears to be here.
Oh, we have Kenneth Brooks. I was wondering who that was in the corner.
For Boys and Girls Club.
Hi, Kenneth.
If he wants to address the council.
Yeah, so just going out of sequence, I'm sorry, Kenneth, I didn't see that you had joined the meeting, and we already did the proclamation for the Boys and Girls Club, but would you like to address the council this evening?
Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity, and no problem at all. This is unusual circumstances for everybody, so very, very understandable. The Boys and Girls Clubs just wanted to say thank you very much for this honor and the proclamation. We wanted to let the council know that we are working very hard to continue serving these 700 youth here in the Quad Cities, about half of that right here in Moline. And we also like to let you know that we are team players and are actively engaged with other organizations and agencies in the community to not only meet our members' needs, but the needs of everyone who needs the most help here in Moline and in the Quad Cities. If there's anything that we can do to support the city's efforts, please don't hesitate and let us know.
Well, thank you so much, and thank you for your commitment and contribution to Moline. We really appreciate the work that your organization has done.
Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you. We're going to resume on the agenda. Agenda item number three, North Slope Dewatering. Tony Lodi?
Hello, Your Honor. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. At the North Slope Water Treatment Plant, one of the final stages in treatment is to dewater all the solids that are settled there. And as part of the long-range capital planning for the utility, going all the way back to 2010, 2011 timeframe, it was determined that the dewatering equipment for both of the treatment plants, the equipment replacement, refurbishment would be deferred until after the plant improvements project was completed. We're at that point now, and we have some new staff on board. Initially, our idea was to refurbish the existing equipment, which is two parents' filter presses that are about 25 years old. They're at the end of their life, and they're increasingly causing us issues. And as a matter of fact, just yesterday, they broke down on this, causing us to delay the dewatering effort until today. So our resolution before you today is to enter into an agreement with Crawford, Mochi, and Tilly to do an analysis of our dewatering efforts there at North Plant. They would look at and make recommendations on the type of equipment that we should be using, as well as the workflow that we use, and also how we feel about disposing of the solids. There are different types of equipment and improvements to the types of technology that are available that were not on the horizon back in 2011 that we would like to look at. There also, the workflow that we use to dewater now involves batching the solids two days a week and involves significant staff time to kind of babysit the equipment as it's running. It's very temperamental in the way that it operates. And so we were hoping that they can recommend the solution that would allow us just to turn the button, turn the lever and start the unit up, and then allow our staff to monitor and perform other tasks. And then thirdly, currently, all of the solids generated at that wastewater treatment plant are taken to the landfill. And we hope that through this analysis that CMT can do, that they can come up with some alternative that will allow us for beneficial reuse of that solids there. So at this point, we did do a RQ process. We have five responses. The three of them, we considered to be relatively equal, and looked at the proposals for each of them, and CMT was the lowest. We negotiated with them to an amount of $49,195, and that staff recommends entering into this agreement.
I'll make a motion to get it on the floor to approve.
I'll second.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item?
Tony, you said this would take about three months to do?
Yes.
And we're going to need to do this sooner or later regardless?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other comments? Alderman Parker?
Your Honor, based on the fact that we're facing this unusual situation with the shutdown of several of our businesses locally, and that is what basically funds all of our operations that are not water-related, I would like to make a motion to table this for three months until we have a better grasp on what our financial situation's going to be looking like.
Second.
We have a motion to table by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Berg. All those in favor of the motion to table, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Can we do a roll call, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Janine's going to call through everyone.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Nay.
Moyer?
Nay.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Nay.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Five ayes, three nays?
That motion to table carries for three months. We'll revisit it again in three months. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. The next item is the 2020 volume cap. Carol Barnes will be presenting that.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Can you hear me?
And we can see you too, and you have lovely flowers in your background.
Oh, thank you. Under Section 146 of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, the city is allocated an annual per capita amount for private activity bond use, which in 2020 this year totals $4,399,000. The Illinois Private Activity Bond Allocation Act provides that a home rule unit of government may transfer its allocation to any other home rule unit of government, the state of Illinois, or any agency of the state, or any non-home rule unit of government. The City Council has adopted a volume cap policy regarding the use transfer or reservation of the city's volume cap allocation. As in the past, the Quad Cities Regional Economic Development Authority is the only agency to request the city's 2020 volume cap and has a mutually beneficial relationship with the city, Rock Island County, and other regional development authorities to best utilize this resource for the benefit of the region. If the city does not obligate this allocation by May 1st, it is automatically turned over to the state of Illinois. And attached in your packet is a list of projects over the last 15 years that this group has used our bonding authority in conjunction with other bonding authority to complete. And with that, staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg?
Second.
We have a second by Alderman Williams. Is there any discussion on this item? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Your Honor.
The next item will be presented by Joe Kullenbeck. It's the 2020 asphalt resurfacing. Joe?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Aye.
We opened the, we're open publicly for our 2020 asphalt resurfacing project. They're open publicly on March 3rd, 2020. Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities have submitted the lowest and most responsible bid, $1,084,018.25 under budget. Budgeted was $1,625,000. Staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg and a second by Alderman Parker, I believe, was that who spoke up? Is there any discussion on this? Alderman Moyer?
So I'm just, I'm curious. One of the line items, just out of curiosity, was traffic control. And the bids for that particular item were everywhere from $10,000 all the way up to $220,000. Centennial actually listed $35,000. Those are some really busy intersections. Are they going to be adequately prepared, do you think?
Yeah, they've done our research projects before. They're well aware of the commitment it takes to get these jobs done. I don't know where the discrepancy would have came from, from the different contractors, actually being that big, but they are certainly capable and aware of the situation, prepared to do the traffic control needed.
It's really odd, isn't it?
Do you have another follow-up?
No, it's just odd.
Oh, okay, yeah. It is unusual. But are you comfortable with it, Joe? You think that that's adequate, that they've dealt with?
Yeah, absolutely.
To address our expectations. Is there any other comment?
Your Honor?
Yes. Alderman Went, was that right?
Yes. Two quick questions. One, the section on 19th Avenue, is that going to be a rebuild or is that a resurfacing? I think we're just doing like a block on 19th?
Yeah, it's a resurface. There may be some subsurface rebuilding that's necessary with this project in different locations, but overall, it's a resurface project.
So will Centennial be doing that? I didn't, that wasn't in the list of things in the description?
Yeah, Centennial would be responsible for it, unless they may subcontract out work that doesn't fall within their own specialty, but yeah, Centennial would be responsible for it.
Okay. That answers both of them. Thank you very much, Joe.
Alderman Parker?
So Joe, I see that the bid is significantly less than what was budgeted. Is this because of the cost of materials, or why is that? So that's the first question of two.
Yeah, to answer that question, our unit prices from last year for asphalt were quite a bit higher than what they came back this year. That was the main reason for our budgeted price.
That makes sense, because it seemed like it went skyrocketed last year. Follow-up, the other piece is we have budgeted, you know, $1.6 million. Are we going to continue, are we going to spend up to that $1.6 million?
We have...
And do a little more road than we thought we were going to be able to do?
Sure. We did talk to Centennial. We identified another road close in proximity to where they're going to be working. That would get us real close to our budget number. We're prepared to continue down that road, get that project ready. Centennial is on board. They feel they have a big penalty that added load. We'll take your recommendation as to where you want us to go with the access funds.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Joe? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you so much, Joe.
Thank you.
The next item is the Department of Healthcare and Family Services, IDA, Chief Snyder.
Good evening, Mayor. Counsel, I stand before you this evening to request your action to rescind an intergovernmental agreement that was signed back in 2019 with the Department of Health and Family Services and the City of Moline, and request that you consider taking action on the revised intergovernmental agreement with the same subject man. And staff does approve, recommends approval. Pardon me.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Chief. We have no other this evening, so we're going to move into the informational items. We'll begin with the QCOM 911 Consolidated Dispatch Center update.
Excuse me just a moment. Are they informational others, though?
We're going to do those as informationals because there's no vote on those, right? So we're beginning with the informational items, then we have a couple of other informationals. Maybe I shouldn't have used the word "other." Additional informationals, how's that? So we'll begin with the QCOM 911 Consolidated Dispatch Center update. Dirk Price will be presenting.
Good evening. So during the budget process in December, concerns were raised concerning the costs associated with our PSAT operation at QCOM. Also, Darren and I, Chief Galt and I, have got up to speed with some of the concerns historically that preceded our time here in Moline. We then did a deep dive on the analysis together with Chief Snyder to see what our options are. Then there were also questions about when, at the budget process, the City of Moline was eligible for leaving QCOM, if that's what it decided to do. You've got the memo from me that outlines our legal options. So from here on, well, starting in June, after June, but every October 1st from now on, if you give notice by then, you can leave at the end of that calendar fiscal year. What does it mean to leave? You're leaving behind your ETSB tax dollars because you've committed them to certain purchases that were made to establish this. We need to remember, for the sake of the public, the reason we joined QCOM and closed our own is because that was a state mandate. In the name of consolidating governments and efficiencies and all the rest, the number of PSATs had to be consolidated and reduced. And so we don't have many options of where we can go. We've got Rock Island County, Rock Island City, and then the arsenal is given a special dispensation for it to maintain its in the name of national defense. When you look around, nobody's immediately got capacity to take us. And in fact, Rock Island County doesn't have space to even add us if they wanted to. The others have physical space in which we could do it, but we would have to invest new dollars, both in equipment and people. And again, you've got none of your traditional revenue source for that. That's tied up through January of 2024 in equipment you bought for QCOM. So that's the bad news, is that as a pragmatic and practical matter, you really don't have many wise options in terms of how you can save money. The good news is, is that already there have been revisions to how it's funded and how your costs are apportioned, and so there have been some savings. Chief Galt did all that homework. Those are the numbers he managed to research and find, and I think that's good news and a better trend for us in terms of cost. a better trend for us in terms of cost. Also, there's the possibility of bringing in customers, which will further defray costs because they will be absorbing some of those things. So, that'll bring your costs down at QCOM. And then in the long term, because there's a change in personnel, which was historically an issue for this council about who was running it, the change in personnel makes it attractive in some sense that, in all of the other things that are changing in this environment, there is a long shot possibility, more of a long-term, I would say, possibility, that maybe the arsenal will come to QCOM, in which case that would open up the opportunity to possibly look at the bylaws and do some new funding things. Indeed, it's anticipated, after we get all the things we're getting through now, that the state may ask for further consolidation of the PSAPs down the road. So, the future in that sense, between now and 2024, remains that you might have the opportunity to open it up on funding, get an additional vote and a little bit more control. But at the moment, as the memo says, we don't see a viable, pragmatic, and practical option to move at this time. And otherwise, the chiefs and I are ready to take questions and see if you want anything further done by us.
Are there any questions for Dirk this evening? Alderman Parker?
Your Honor, Dirk and to the chief, one of the concerns I've always had is the equitable voting. You know, it seems as though we pay for roughly half of all the costs and we get one quarter of the vote. And I was wondering if there's any way to balance that out, or I know when we had a previous city administrator, he had indicated that perhaps there could be like a veto on our part, you know, not necessarily that we should, you know, pass the vote, but something a little bit more equitable so that we don't end up in the corner with three people ganging up against us and we shoulder the majority of the bill and have zero say in how things are operated. I was wondering if you had input on that.
So, we have ideas. There are a couple of things. The mayor shared some ideas with me. I know you have shared some of those ideas with the mayor. And to do it, though, of course, we need to get the buy-in of the others at the moment. Some of the opportunity to do that was lost when we created this voting procedure. So, that's why if there was somebody else coming, that would be an opportunity to open the bylaws, that would be a real opportunity to fix some of this in terms of adding additional control. You are correct that, and what I'm thinking about, Alderman Parker, is something more like the Great Compromise that gave us equal representation in one sense and then proportional representation in another, and that there would be an opportunity to do both, including maybe the first baby step would be, and we can explore this, to see if we can apportion some costs instead of proportionally equally. I mean, that's how some of other agencies, whether it's water or PSAPs or different kinds of intergovernmental-related agencies, they have taken some of the costs and said, these are all equal and these other ones are proportional, so that not everything is 50% our cost. That's the first way to stop getting ganged up on. But in terms of additional votes, we're going to need to amend the bylaws, and of course, at the moment, we don't have the power to force that on anybody. So, that would be more of a question about equitable governance, and taking a baby step first on costs might be the way to do it.
Is there any other? Alderman Parker?
So, one of the, I think really the only lever that I see us being able to pull is to threaten to pull out of the whole agreement. Is that correct?
That's the lever you have to pull, yeah. But you're leaving behind your money till January 2024.
Who's her?
It just burns me that we are, you know, we are at a significant disadvantage, so far as to say, and that was determined by people that are long gone by now. But, you know, it's just, it's an unfortunate situation.
I'm sorry, I can't remember the structure of it. Chief Galt, are you our representative on QCOM?
Chief Snyder.
Chief Snyder is?
JD and I am G.
JD and Chief Snyder are our representatives on QCOM. And so, each of the other three have two representatives as well? But we have one vote?
The four administrators are technically the board.
Okay.
I am a cityman as a voting member if the city administration is absent.
Did the people that?
Your Honor, can the chief get to a microphone? Because I couldn't hear what he was saying.
He's kind of thinking that. He's going to repeat himself.
There are four voting entities on the board, and the four city administrators for each municipality serve that function. The other, the secondary members of the board are voting members only when there's an absent city administrator. So, there are still only four votes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Alderman Berg?
So, did you say the four votes are all the city administrators, did you say?
Correct.
Okay. So, I, so, right now, since we still have JD as our interim, is it possible that we change over and have Chief Galt? Or do we need to keep it as a city minister?
I think it's set in the bylaws, but I can't really recall. It's been a while since I've looked at it, but I think it's the QCOM bylaws that determine that. I don't think it's us. Is that correct, Chief Galt? I'm looking at you.
Okay.
So, I think that they've looked at that. I think that's set. I just couldn't recall how it was structured. Thank you. So, thank you for.
Your Honor?
Yes. Alderman Went?
Dirk, one of the comments, and maybe this is just a procedural thing, I wasn't aware exactly how that worked. The ETSB funds, I believe was what you were talking about, that we used up our share of them as far as the build-out? Was that something that we, and maybe we did, that we voted on to allocate our share of them? Or is it something that is a share? I guess I thought the ETSB funds kind of went into this other governing body, and then they made determinations for this area where they should be allocated. I didn't realize they were like earmarked for our community specifically.
So, it's built into the DNA of the PSAP, intergovernmental agreement, and then how the ETSB works, and then decisions made by QCOM. So, it's not like council here voted to do it, per se. But when the loan was taken to purchase this equipment, everybody's share that goes into funding the QCOM revenue stream was committed to the payout of that loan. And that payout isn't, under all circumstances, being the same, and of course, that'd be different, but under all circumstances being the same, those ETSB funds are committed to pay back that loan for that build-out through January 2024. So, it's a commitment that was made by the council, not a specific commitment to that particular purchase, but that purchase was made within the DNA structure that was authorized to happen. And that's why our share of ETSB money is committed with others until that loan is paid off.
Alderman Went?
So, if I'm understanding it, you're right, that there wouldn't be anything that would necessarily prohibit if the ETSB still had funds available for them to fund consolidation, let's say if Rock Island County wanted to move into Rock Islands, they could do that, or if we wanted to join that as well, that they could use their funds if the ETSB had additional funds left over, that they could do another build-out, right?
That's correct. We looked at the possibility that a grant would come to pay off part of the loan or all of the loan that was taken by, for the QCOM build-out and equipment. And so, then that would free up your ETSB money earlier. That's true. Or if we got more ETSB money than we're anticipating, so that our share of the loan was exceeded by our share of available ETSB, then we'd have a little trickle of money available right away as well.
Dirk, just for clarification, I believe that we were awarded a grant. By "we," I mean the ETSB was awarded a grant because there was a temporary bridge loan that was procured, and then that all went away when the grant came through last summer. Is that not correct, chief? Chief Galt's approaching the podium.
Yeah, there was a grant that was awarded, and I believe it's, I don't know if I have it here in my notes here, I think it's about $300,000 that would be returned back to QCOM to pay for the Symphony Consoles portion of that. So, there was some expenses that the city paid originally before the loan was originated. And I think that's in the memo that Dirk provided towards the end. There was some floor build-out costs and a couple of Symphony Consoles, $67,960 in 2008 for the floor build-out. And then there will be, then there was $174,000 that was spent. And so, there is a grant that's pending, and so there'll be some that'll come back that might lower a future quarterly invoice that would go into basically a reserve fund to pay, you know, front payroll and things like that. But that was awarded, and there is a payout that's due for that.
Alderman Went?
So, the grant, if that was just for the Symphony Consoles, then the ETSB fund or money that is going in was for a physical build-out of the third floor of the Mylan Municipal Building, of which the residents of Mylan then wind up with a completely built-out third story of their building on ETSB funds? And once it's paid off, then it's just an asset that they get to keep? How does that exactly work?
Well, if QCOM dissolved, we'd have to take care of the equitable apportionment of the assets, but short of a full dissolution of QCOM, yes, that's right, that asset remains where it is.
Alderman Berg?
Sorry, I have a question. I just want to make sure I understand. You said, or maybe chief said, that it's about a million dollars for us to go build up with Rock Island, correct? Is that what you said?
I put in the memo that we don't know the actual cost because we'd have to design and plan it and do all the rest, but the cost of the personnel and depending on how many consoles we buy could range from several hundred thousand to up to a million dollars, depending on what it is we need to build when.
Okay. And then, we would, do we get some money back then in 2024?
No.
Oh, we don't? Okay, then.
No, just as your revenue stream becomes available to you. The ETSB is the 911 call money, essentially. And that money would be available to you again as a revenue stream. But without that revenue stream, you're looking at general fund dollars.
Just to clarify my understanding, we don't have control of that revenue stream, though, do we? I think that flows to the ETSB board and they decide how it's distributed, don't they?
We have indirect, that's true, but it's indirect control because if QCOM hadn't approved the loan, the money then wouldn't be committed in the sense that we could leave this, at the end of this fiscal year, and ETSB money would follow it to our PSAP. But because we approved the loan and the commitment under the bylaws, if we leave, we're still committed to having to pay off any of those loans that we're committed to when we were a member. That's why our ETSB money is committed behind us until that loan is paid off.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Alderman Parker?
Because there's several new members on the council from when this was going on, I think it's important to note, that is kind of a footnote, that the chairman of the ETSB is also the city administrator for Mylan where the build-out happened. And I believe our member of the ETSB ended up being the initial director of the QCOM. So, there's a, there was a lot of stuff that happened that, from a city council perspective, we either didn't have a say in or didn't know about. And I'm just trying to clean up some of the things, specifically the voting, as much as possible. And that was my whole idea about driving. You know, I don't really necessarily want to leave, but I also don't want to be put in a situation where, you know, once again, we're putting the majority of the bill with a minority of the vote.
Thank you. Alderman Berg?
One more question. So, I'm reading some information on the QCOM, and they said the makeup of the board is actually the city administrators and the police chiefs. So, I guess my question is, why do we have Chief Snyder opposed to Chief Galt?
Oh, I think it was just because Chief Snyder was here when we had to appoint a chief, but it could be either.
Switched back?
Yeah, I think that's why that happened. It could be switched back, but.
And he's the only fire representative. He was a fire officer at the local police.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you, Dirk. Moving on, the proposed 2020 sidewalk infill locations. Rod Schick?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. On February 25th, I brought this item to you with just five locations for you to consider for the sidewalk infill, and at that time, council directed me to bring back more. But this evening, there are 10 locations on the list that could be considered. And so, we're looking for a little direction from you folks as far as how you'd like us to kind of proceed. We do have a total budget of $100,000, so we need to be mindful of that. We can certainly pick a little bit more and certainly, you know, put those, get up too close to $100,000, the additional ones can be put out as alternates as well. So, we're just looking for a little bit of direction on that. Any questions or comments that you may have?
Alderman?
Again, on some of these items, Rod, is it possible to put some of the more expensive being number 10 and number three, number 10? Possibly put those on hold until we get through this bubble that we're going through right now?
Yes, absolutely. And that's part of what the direction, like I said, we only have a total of $100,000 budgeted for this year to do this work. So, certainly, if those are the ones you wanted to do, we'd only be able to do one or two.
So, Rod, I would suggest that the council will have to make some decisions with guidance from staff. Is there anything that you want to share with us that we would need as we determine, like expenditures moving forward?
Sure. The number one location is probably a pretty high priority in that. Niglafen did give us right away to, in order to put that sidewalk in. So, that would be, you know, something to consider. Two, number two, number four, number five, were part of the original presentation. Number three was swapped out for what was on there the previous time was a little section I thought I had in the city. So, we would still probably lean towards those four, number two, number four, number five, and look at doing one, two, and four as the base, and potentially number five as an alternate on that bid in the event that it would be $100,000.
Your Honor?
Yes, Alderman Schumaker, oh, Alderman Went? Or Alderman Schumaker, I'm not sure who spoke.
Oh, I'll talk, and then if Alderman Schumaker wants the next. I guess what I'd like to see happen is, I know that we've got this amount budgeted, but I do have concerns on what our revenue is going to be moving forward. And while I have been a huge proponent of the sidewalk infill and trying to get as much of this done as possible, I'm not 100% confident of where we're going to be resource-wise and whether this is an absolute mission-critical thing that needs to be done this year or can't be put off a little bit until we get a better idea of where we're at in a few weeks or even after Carol gets her presentation today. So, I would be in favor of pushing this out for a couple of weeks to make this determination because my guess, and maybe there's a question for Rod, if we wait a couple of weeks to make this determination, is it going to result in any friction or not being able to get this done this year?
No, I don't think so. I think we can certainly, you know, push this off and we can see where things settle down to. So, I don't have any concerns that this would create any problems for us to do later.
Is it the consensus of council to follow Alderman Went's idea on that? I've got nods here in the room. How are my people?
Yes.
So, that's a hold for us for now, Rod, if you don't mind.
That's fantastic. I will look to bring this back to you in a month or so after we have a little better idea where things are at.
Perfect. Now, we'll move to the road diet policy update. Rod Schick?
All right, this is fun. Back on March 10th, Joe Kullenbeck, Laura Clower, and Matt Moore, and Alderman Went, and I met to kind of kick off the road diet, complete streets process, where we're going to go, what we were hoping to kind of achieve with that. And it was really. And it was really a great, great meeting. We had an amazing dialogue throughout the entire time. And it was lots of enthusiasm, excitement. We talked about a lot of different things. But just real quick, some of the things that we're looking, that came from that is really starting to really advance our design work so that this is something that's already in place ahead of budget time and so that it can be included in the capital fund discussions as we're trying to, as you folks are trying to, you know, lead us down the streets that you'll need us to get taken care of. We discussed basically, you know, developing our little group, our committee, so that we would also reach out and put folks from Metro Bay, from By State, from somebody from the bicycle community. And really trying to work to where we're working on a five, 10, 15 year plan where we've got some designs and things that, you know, are in place so that we can pull the trigger as the stuff goes. So one of the things that we did, and this is all very, very preliminary type work here. You'll see that we've done an initial location recommendation for implementing some road diet. And what we intend to do is dive much deeper into this and look at using our line striping contract that we have to move that forward and begin to implement some of these strategies out there as it relates to road diet. That's kind of the initial list in front of you that's up right now. And then there was a really quick, then, the diagrams that follow that that showed that, what those might potentially look like. And that'd be the next one they're done. And I don't know if you want to just rapidly kind of go through each of those. But again, these are just preliminary, but these are the sorts of things that we're looking at and the locations that we discussed in our meeting were kind of those areas where it should be a relatively easier kind of an area to do it in but still have some significant impact. Like number one, the 52nd Avenue, down there, 16th to 27th Street. Government down there on those areas, it can get a little hectic and a little crazy with people driving and stuff down there. So same thing, the River Drive from Rock Island border to 12th Street. And that fact is something that John Deere folks have reached out and wanted some calming and things down there as they're getting more employees and having concerns about pedestrians crossing four lanes and very active traffic. Where this really might come into play and be very, very beneficial for that area. But that's, that's that kind of stuff. And like I said, we're going to dive a lot, lot deeper into that and be bringing those back to you to get your approval on that. And then one of the, then the last item that should eventually show up there, one of the things that we'll also be getting to work on right away as we pass our little committee, is this flow chart, which basically is, which stolen from Des Moines, no shame in that. But basically, this is be, we look to, and that's something along the lines of this flow chart so that we can really be communicating with you on a regular basis so that it's not something that all of a sudden is brought up and you're expected to then vote on it. That this is a process that will include you and be involved with you and everyone in the whole thing. So I don't know, Alderman Went, if you wanted to add anything. But like I said, we're really excited here about it. We see a lot of meat and interesting, exciting to them.
Yeah, if you don't mind, thank you very much, Rod. I think this is a good first start and I think it gives kind of the overall idea of what we're going to try to accomplish. And Rod did, I think, mention this a little bit at the beginning. But while I think the complete streets and the road diet is really important and that's where these ideas came out, and if we're going to be restriping some of these streets that we can make some pretty significant changes that increase safety and make our residents safer and more bikeable and those sorts of things for a very low price. But the other issue that came up, which I'm extremely excited about, is the idea that our engineering staff is going to start doing engineering earlier. Historically, what I took from the meeting was basically, until things kind of went through the budget and got approved, we weren't really digging in and doing much engineering. So it was really a compacted period of time from when the budget went through to when they started to have to bid. It was all hands on deck and doing all that engineering and stuff in a very small period of time, you know, three to four months or less, where maybe we can figure out a way, we know what we're going to do. You know, let's say, we know we're going to do at least five projects each year that we would start that engineering sooner in the pipeline and start to get those things on the shelf so that when we do approve them, we're not scrambling last minute. That way we can bid them earlier, hopefully get better prices for them as well. And also that will allow, by doing it earlier, to get more input through this committee and wind up with a better design. So thank you very much for the committee. What you guys saw here today isn't necessarily the final result of what these will look like. I'm hoping that we'll be able to set something up here soon to talk about even these and tweak them just a little bit. But we also want to get your guys' input. If you see something on these that you may want to change and have communication with the entire council and bring it to you as soon as we can, as often as we can.
So that kind of brings me to something I wanted to discuss with the council. And that is, you know, doing this kind of work and doing it in collaboration so that the policy is following a law, you know, or is aligned with what our engineering department is doing, addressing our road work requirements. So we've always kind of had that as a priority in our council and it keeps coming up of how do we address the breadth of what is required for maintaining our road system and adjust it against the money that we have available. So what I'd like for the council to consider is allowing a committee to be formally established that would be a partner between the council and our engineering department to develop these projects and have a common goal in the projects. And it would incorporate things like the road diet, which is more of a complete streets policy, it's a subcomponent of that. So the complete streets policy as well as meeting our goals of rehabilitating our roads, building new roads, doing, you know, any kind of maintenance to our roads. And I would see that as a committee that would be staffed by no more than two council members. And I would like to work with the engineering department to find out what that would look like from their side and how we could make that work. Is the council open to something like that moving forward?
Yes.
Do you have any comment? I'm getting thumbs up. Does anybody have any concerns? So hearing none, I'll work with staff to try to come up with a proposal and we'll bring that back to council for your consideration. And we may, we may develop a standing committee or else we may do like a temporary committee that has a, I don't know, a sunset in it just to see how it goes. Thank you. Thank you very much, Rod.
Your Honor?
Yes?
Thank you.
Who is speaking?
Your Honor, Dick Potter, I'd like to make a comment here.
Please go ahead.
I, I guess I have some minor concerns regarding some of the surfaces, like particularly around the high school. I know there's some, some of the roads are not all that great. And I'm wondering, are we going to mesh the road diet policy with improvements to the road, number one? And my second question is, for instance, the number one, 52nd Avenue, I could see the need to calm the traffic down in that area. But the Colonnus Bike Trail is just a little bit south of there. And I don't know why anybody would want to be on their bike on that area there when the other, the bike trail is available not far away. That's all.
Those are good points. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Went?
Well, I can speak to a couple of those things. One, I can talk about 52nd. My office actually sits on 52nd. And there is zero reason why there should be four lanes, that are two going in both directions. There are a number of people who do walk in that area. And just crossing, so moving down to a three lane with a turn lane in the middle makes it safer for not only the pedestrians, but it honestly, it makes it safer for the drivers as well. And when you're making that reduction down, you can make those lanes, you know, 15 feet wide and then make them airline strips, which encourages people to drive super fast. Or what you do in these situations is you reduce lane widths as well, which also is a traffic calming and slows things down. And so what you're left over with is the bike path. As I'm sure you're aware, just west of there, just west of 16th Street, on the south side of 52nd Avenue, there was installed a multi-use path all the way down to the Trinity area and then into the new bike path that connects to the Myland Bridge. And so that seems like a very natural connection in with that multi-use bike path. Because again, and probably just, probably about a month and a half ago, I was with my kids riding on that bike path on 52nd to get down to that bike back by the Myland that way. So I think having that makes things safer for our residents, for our drivers, for our pedestrians, and then makes us more biker friendly.
Is there anything else? Thank you very much. Thank you so much, Rod, for that presentation.
Thank you.
We are going to move on to, we have the two additional informationals. And we will begin with, Carol, are you ready? Or Dirk, would you like to go first? Who's wanting to go first?
I'll take, okay, Carol can get ready.
Carol, you get ready. Dirk's going to be quick.
Okay, no, that'll be fine.
Brief follow up on the I-74 bridge loan program. We ran it through the revolving loan fund. And in typical fashion, because the revolving loan fund was $30,000, that kind of size, that was beyond the authority of any director or of the city administrator to approve. The bridge loan is a maximum of $10,000. And to speed getting this to the people who need it and have applied, I'd like to just clarify and confirm with you that that's within the authority of the directors to approve. We don't need to bring those back to council. I've gone over the phone. Alderman Schumaker was good enough to give me his time to help with a revised, simplified promissory note and personal guarantee in the background. So we have a simplified, more streamlined program, start to finish, on the I-74 bridge program, recognizing that it's a more modest amount of money to begin with. And I just want to make sure that nobody has any heartburn if we get that approved by directors and not have to come back here for three meetings before we can get that in the hands of the people who need it.
Well, it was my understanding that was the direction of council anyway. So I don't think, unless someone has had a change of heart and wants more authority and more oversight on that program. Alderman Berg?
No, but I do, I mean, and I'm not sure how to do this and I don't know whether we, I guess, I would rather, and I don't know how to say, but I guess I would rather know if somebody got denied rather than us walk into a restaurant and say, you know, that they're having some hardship. Not walk into a restaurant right now, but you know, having some hardships and that they applied and they couldn't get it for whatever reason. So I don't know if there's, if that's something that JD can put in his weekly report or something like that, just so we know.
I'll make sure that staff reports any denials to you. So, but the criteria for the bridge program, since the public's watching, the criteria is simple. You just have to make a rational case for the fact that the bridge construction project impacted you. And so, for example, the most current applicant dead poets, that's easily and readily apparent because they're right there. Traffic is inhibited from getting to them. So it just has to be a rational case. That's the only criteria. The committee still looks at it because that's the revolving loan fund. But the criteria is much more reduced than the other revolving loan fund program, so.
So just to, just to respect what your position is, I just got that feedback from a restaurant. They said that they were told that they didn't qualify because they did not have enough employees. So I don't know at what point that communication was given to them, but they were under the understanding they had to have more than 25 employees. There is some misinformation that was put out there. And so I think, to your point, we do want to have updates on what's happening with that program. Because I asked for an update today. I don't think any of the council members knew what was the status of that. But right now we have one applicant and they are waiting for the money. And so with this, the work that Dirk did today, that money will be released to them.
Will it be done?
And how, I'm sorry.
Yes, Alderman.
And how, how difficult is it? Is it a one-page application? Is it a 20-page, you know?
It's about two pages.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Dirk.
Okay.
Carol, so I've asked Carol to present an informational tonight. And it's on the heels of the email that she sent to the council. I thought it would be good for us to kind of have a conversation about that. Went through the process of trying to give us a sense of what kind of impact the COVID-19 situation will have on our budgeted funding. And so Carol, I'm going to turn it over to you. But my intention this evening is for Carol to give you a sense of what this would be exposed to, kind of what would be the kind of minimum and what would be kind of the maximum and at what point we will have a better idea of the situation. Yes, so Carol, can I turn it over to you?
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. As the mayor said, I wanted to continue our communication from Friday, Friday's email. And we have already started on trying to build a cash flow model for all of our major operating funds. The city has not done that in the past, so we're kind of starting from scratch. And as we receive more information regarding this COVID-19 event, we will have better information to try to fine tune revenue numbers in that model. What I've done so far, we have talked with the city of Bettendorf, city of Davenport, as well as the city of Rock Island. And we are all finding our way through this. But generally, upon talking to all the finance directors, the revenue estimates that we gave you on Friday are pretty much in the ballpark of what other communities are doing some preliminary estimates at. As I mentioned in our email, currently, we are very fortunate that we've got about $50 million in of cash in the bank right at this moment. Of that amount, about upwards of $30 million is the general fund, Parks and Library, and all of our internal service funds. The remaining $20 million is largely all of our enterprise funds, capital, and our MFT funds, as well as some special revenue funds. And what I did when the mayor called is try to do the best we could here just to say, with this shutdown potentially maybe only lasting 14 days, they've talked about maybe two weeks that we're all on this stay at home order right now. If that was to lift in a couple of weeks, the best we could determine, it would only be about a million dollars or a little bit more of an impact. We anticipate about a two to five percent impact. And with that, I think we could pretty much ride the storm out. Obviously, we'd have to be ramping up. I don't think two weeks is going to be it. I think at the earliest, it would probably take more through April, even with a ramp up. So we'd probably be looking at about a million to a million and a half of lost revenue supporting our general operations. In the email that I sent out on Friday, we were projecting, where would we be approximately at June 30th, if it lasted a few months longer than that? And in that email, talked about $2.5 million potential lost revenue. And again, it's very hard to project those revenues because they have a combination of, some of them are 30-day lag, 60-day lag, 90-day lag. Keith did make some phone calls to the state today. And it appears, you know, our January and February numbers are very, very good. And it appears they're even going to be higher than they were last year. And we anticipate that some of those will even be good through the middle of March. And so we will be not feeling all of the hurt here, starting possibly till May and June, when those revenues start to decline from this March shutdown. Those June 30th numbers, if we were to start... Those June 30th numbers, if we were to start ramping, if it kind of ended like the end of May, trying to ramp up towards June, that was that $2.5 million, and that was a projection of overall revenues, each one's different, but between 30 and 50% in total is what make up those $2.5 million. If we then extend, and again, this is very, very difficult to do at this point without more information, but if we extend out a full six months, we could be looking at closer to 40 to 60%. If we tried to ramp up and everything comes back to normal, what normal could be as of September 30th, that would push us most likely into the $9 to $10 million of shortfall. And when I said we had about $30 million of money in the bank in our operating, the general, parks, library, and internal service funds, we can be thankful that that $9 to $10 million, it's about a third of our current operating funds. So we still have two-thirds left, but you know, $10 million, that would be, that would be a tough one to try to battle through. All of our enterprise funds right now, Stormwater, Sewer, all of those funds, they are in good shape. We will eventually receive those monies. It's charges for services, and although we have slowed the process because we're not shutting off any water, and we've kind of postponed our penalties and interest as to get through this process, eventually, we will get the actual original charge for the service. So I believe that those funds will not be near as affected as what our other operating funds are. So as we move through this, JD and I and all the department heads, we talked several times last week, that starting immediately, we need to halt all nonessential spending. And I believe that we should start, we should begin preparing an amended budget. And as we get better information, we'll continue to retool it, and I'm going to continue to keep the information flow to you as we get revenues or we're seeing something, please feel confident that I will be sending out memos, and I will do the very best that I can to communicate things so you can make good decisions. One thing I wanted to say, we are fortunate, if things get really bad, we do currently have a $2.9 million line of credit, which is almost a third of that potential drawdown through September. So that helps take the bite out of that. If we felt we didn't want to spend reserves, if we thought we needed some short-term borrowing, that will be something that we'll have to decide in the future. The other thing, although it appears to be small now, we were happy about it earlier, we will be receiving about a half a million dollars in fee reimbursement. It did not come in last year's audit, audited numbers through December like we had hoped, but we do expect to be receiving that now in the next couple of months. So we've got a little bit of a cash flow benefit there, the line of credit. But again, not knowing how long this is going to extend out, we have got to be very conservative and leaning on all of us together jointly to make good decisions for this community.
So Carol, I know your department is busy with audits, you are busy with it. When does the audit completed?
I'm so sorry, Mayor, you were cutting out. Could you ask that again?
Yeah, I know that you're busy with your audit currently. When is the audit completed?
We, it's actually not going to end till about the end of April now. Our auditors have been faced with the same dilemma, all of which we are, with businesses shutting down, they are currently in the middle of other audits with deadlines that have to be made and completion dates met. So our audit has been pushed back ever so slightly, and frankly, we are behind because of everything that has just kind of come before us. But hopefully, here by the end of April, we will be free and clear with the audit being finalized.
Well, something that I'd like to talk about is, I think that it would be in our best interest to try to understand what we can understand and try to understand the different scenarios that could play out as soon as possible so that we make the adjustments that we need to make. It's not.
No, absolutely.
It's not just our budgets. We need to worry about the library budget, we need to worry about the parks budget, we need to worry about all of our, the other revenue sources that could be impacted by this COVID-19. So what I'd like for the council and staff to kind of talk about is, could we focus resources on, and I'm looking at you, under Carol's leadership, could she get some additional resources to help prepare something that the council could look at at the next meeting of not only what we would expect to be the adjustment on revenue, but what we potentially could do to adjust expenditures to get us to a position that we could absorb with any other path? What's the council's thoughts on that? Is that something that we want to do, or do we want to wait?
That would be good. I make, we need to make a motion?
Um, I don't, we might need to make a motion, JD?
Don, am I? I'm not going to mess with that feedback, right? Stand here.
Your Honor, as I mentioned earlier, when we talked, the days are running together, maybe that was yesterday, when we talked about some of this and some of the instructions that we've had, is that, yeah, we were already looking at that internally, and I think we could probably commit to Carol to get her some of those things as we start looking through in the budgets, what you're asking about. And I do totally agree, I've started to kind of making my list of the different things if we request the Parks Board and the Library Board to maybe revisit in the attempt to do a budget adjustment in their areas too, and some of the impacts that that could make in those areas as well. So, yeah, I will do it. I, like I told you yesterday, I've had to commit to the, obviously, the intensity of the urgency of preparing for our workforce, you know, as we start to feel some of the same things other workforces are, and then I'm going to shift all my time to the financial components.
Well, something that I feel is, we won't really have an opportunity to do that, because as this crisis evolves, you're still going to be at the front of dealing with the flood, dealing with the adjustments in how we're addressing things as we have positive COVID. So what would you think about Carol leading this effort and collecting resources from your team that she needs in order to establish an estimate for adjustments to revenue as well as some opportunities for adjustments to expenses to balance that?
Wonderful with Carol leading it up, yeah, and I'll give her all the help I can, and then, like I say, shift what resources from others.
Okay. Carol, what do you need for staffing? If we were to ask you to come back to us at the next meeting, which is only two weeks out, what would you need for support to work something up for us so that we could see what the levers are that we could eventually pull?
If we're talking about two weeks, I, it would be wonderful if I could have a full-time person for a couple of weeks to help, help just dedicate time or to take the load off of the audit, and it would allow me to dedicate my time, but if we had another.
When doing something like that, Carol, is that something that someone could do remotely? If they were a tele, telework?
Possibly, possibly, as long as I had good communication with that person. It'll take some strategic planning to to build a model like that and to try to put it together within two weeks. But yes, we could possibly do that remotely.
What are your thoughts, JD?
I want to talk to Carol, I guess. She mentioned that we could probably get some professional, contract hired professional staff, you know, and that with finance, but if that's not an option, then I'll have to dig deeper and see who I've got.
That's an option.
Okay.
Not right now.
Then I'll have to go.
I don't, I mean, I don't need to speak for the council. Is that an option right now? Hire consultants for this?
No, no.
Okay. Go, I'll have to go see what kind of resources I can find.
Thank you. So I think we do need a vote on this.
Alderman Parker and Alderman Schoonmaker, I think, have something.
Sorry, I was ignoring you guys. Alderman Parker.
I'd ignore me too, but Your Honor, I don't know if Don can do something, but I can only hear about every other word on your microphone that you're saying.
On Stephanie's microphone?
I don't know if anybody else is having that problem.
Yes, I'm having a hard time hearing.
I think we all have to make sure that we hit mute when we stop talking and then, and back and forth, because I think we're getting a feedback.
But also, Your Honor, if I could just forward in there, I'd like to thank Carol for all the work she's done in a really short period of time. It's, it's really great to have someone at the helm there that responds extremely quickly and gives us the confidence that we need that we are going to be able to navigate through these times. So thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Alderman Parker.
Alderman Schoonmaker, did you have something? I can't see your face right now, but.
Oh, is my camera not working?
Uh-uh. At least I can't see you. Did you?
I can see you.
Say?
I can see Kevin.
You can see.
I can't see.
Okay, well, I'm here.
We see you as a K, you're a K on this.
Doesn't work.
So we've talked about expenses and how much we're spending. We haven't mentioned a spending freeze, you know? I think it'd be appropriate to direct staff to freeze all nonessential spending at this time.
Looking for thoughts.
Well, I think that, yeah, we're all kind of brainstorming. I've spoken with Allison a little bit. I don't know if Allison, if you want to address some of the things that you had mentioned of potential levers, just to put us in a hold position until we can really evaluate the situation.
Sure.
Allison's approaching the microphone. JD is stepping away from the microphone.
Steep away from the microphone. So the mayor and I discussed this afternoon, and JD and I had discussed previously, recruitments, right now, we're kind of in flux, so we decided just to pause recruitments and make an evaluation of what's essential and critical and what's nonessential. But until we can make that determination, we just put a pause on everything, looking at different seasonal employees. If the pool's not open, it doesn't obviously make sense to hire seasonals for the pool. And I should mention too, both JD and Carol have sent out emails to staff that have said exactly what Alderman Schoonmaker is saying, that nonessential spending needs to stop. This is an uncertain time, and we shouldn't be spending when we don't know if we have the revenues coming in. So I'm trying to think, were there other things that we discussed?
No, we had talked about the temps. I think that's something that I'll be looking for from Carol's evaluation of potential expense levers that we can pull would be things like programs that are heavily subsidized, that are nonessential, so that we're whittling away back at what we exactly need to do. But I would look to staff to kind of define those. But I think what the council, I mean, with with this direction of council, it'd probably be reasonable for us to add on there that we are looking for a pause on everything that we absolutely can pause on, like that discussion of hiring a contractor, I mean, an automatic pause on everything like that for, to be integrated into the potential expenditure at the next discussion in a couple of weeks. Is that, is that reasonable? I got hints from Alderman Wynn.
Yeah, I think to that point, when we talk about seasonal or temporary, you know, we're going to have some situations here where we've got full-time staff that maybe what they do on a day-to-day basis is being put off or is not absolutely essential or whatever, and see if we can utilize those people so that we keep them working to do those seasonal and temporary things. I would much rather use those people than hire outside. So I guess, from my standpoint, I'd like to stop all of that until we kind of get an idea from Carol and recommendations from Allison and staff on how, you know, the mission critical, absolutely essential things, and who is doing those jobs full-time, and then what staff do we have left over, and how do we utilize them in other areas that we may also need seasonally moving forward.
Allison, you took the words out of my mouth, Alderman Wynn. We've been having those kind of discussions. I think we have a staff here who is understanding of the situation, but also willing to pitch in. I grew up in a family business. If you weren't doing the work in the back, you're cleaning the windows, you're vacuuming, you're doing whatever it takes. So I think our staff here is absolutely willing to do that, those kinds of things. So we're on board, and if you have ideas and brainstorming, feel free to shoot me an email.
Alderman Parker?
Do we have, with our contract for the seasonal employees, do we have like a guarantee that we're, we have to ask for so many people, or is it real flexible?
No, I believe it's just the markup. I'll double check it, but there's no minimum number of employees I don't believe that we have to have.
Just want to be sure we're not going to end up paying for something and not have people work. I mean, we already do enough of that, it seems, you know, coming up here, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Something that came up, and this would be JD. JD, something that came up was our PERMAR contract. What is our contract and why are we still ticketing people for parking violations?
So I'll follow up on that. I sent an email to Carol, I don't know if Carol can, if she starts communicating, if it jumps in, but I know Carol and Keith are working on that abeyance and that on that. So I hadn't heard any more since that first directive I sent to Carol. Carol, can you jump in and tell me if?
Something I know about?
No.
I'm so sorry, I've got a lot of feedback.
Sorry, I'm not sure what. I was just asking JD about our contract with PERMAR, and I was questioning why we're still enforcing parking tickets in the downtown area.
That was one item that we are looking at closely, because we have only issued, I think it's five tickets since last Wednesday. There's virtually not a lot of people down here, and I, with the cost of the employee, that would be a consideration if we're able to in our contract to temporarily let that person go.
Okay. I don't think that we're even allowed to do that right now. I thought that there was a mandate from the governor, unless I'm misunderstanding his mandate, because I thought he was restricting our ability to even issue, I'm looking at you, Chief, but maybe you know, enforce non-moving violations like camera violations through intersections. I thought I had heard that. So I assume that applied to the parking ticket situation too. No, I might be just making that up.
Don?
No, I don't think that, I don't think, the executive order, you're right, the governor has looked at putting certain things in abeyance, but that's not one of them. And in fact, if we're trying to get people off the streets and be home, enforcement in the background for those kinds of vehicle things are still allowed. What he wants to do is get rid of late fees and certain other things. But still, to Carol's point, there aren't a lot of people down here, so parking might not be the highest priority in that. Well, I'll look, send me the contract, we'll look there. Got force majeure or impossibility or frustration, all of those things are in play now in almost every contract, so we'll see what we can do.
So Carol, did you hear that? Can you?
I believe so. I will get together with Dirk and review that contract.
Thank you.
Yes.
Your Honor.
That's a great idea.
Alderman Burke has something? Alderman Burke?
So Mayor, like, so for our city only, can we do something where we are not charging those tickets, I guess, or charging the, can we do, should we do the, I mean, can we do the parking violations that you're, or those speeding violations or any of that stuff right now, or no? I mean?
What do you, tell me what the question is?
Well, you said that you thought that the governor had something already set in.
I think I was wrong, though. I don't know. I thought it was, I thought it was non, non-moving violations that we weren't supposed to enforce. I thought, but it could have been another governor. I'm just probably misspeaking. But my thought is, is that is not essential, is enforcing parking tickets in the downtown area right now. And so I would, I would definitely put that on the cutting block for controlling our expenditures.
Or what about, okay, controlling, because then we would let go of that PERMAR person, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't think that that program has ever been a revenue generator, and it certainly won't be a revenue generator now, for issuing five tickets in a week. So lots of things.
Your Honor.
Oh, sorry, Alderman Wynn. Thank you.
If I recall, I think that PERMAR contract has a 30-day termination clause in it, and so I'm sure if we called PERMAR up and said, hey, the alternatives are, we give you your 30-day and we're done with you, or let's work with you to put a pause on this thing right now, pull that person off the street as soon as possible, and move forward. I'm not necessarily 100% in, I don't want to tie the police officers' hands if they need to enforce some things downtown for people who are out of line for whatever. Obviously, we want to give them good leeway, and we want to be very understanding, and I don't want them out there writing tickets or anything, but. But, and they wouldn't be, but I think a better route to go is to get that Permar person off the street as soon as possible and put a pause on that contract.
Dirk has something?
Mayor, what I think you were referring to is the fact that several other mayors across the state have issued that order not to issue parking tickets. Mayor Lightfoot in Chicago, Mayor Chirico in Naperville, they've issued that kind of order under their emergency powers. So, to Alderman Went's point, if you wanted to issue such an order, we could immediately stop issuing parking tickets, and then we can tell Permar, you know, you're in abeyance, or we can terminate you with 30 days, either one.
It may be just a matter of discussing the situation with Permar, because they may feel an obligation to continue to provide that service because they're under contractual obligation. So, I think we should probably start with that. And then, if we need some, something else from the council to address those issues, but those, that's a perfect example of something that we're spending money on right now that is not helpful or necessary.
Okay.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Do you want us, because we're not meeting for a couple of weeks, do you want us to give you the authority if you, and I don't know if that's maybe something you can do just by direction, if you want to make some determination regarding those parking tickets and those sorts of things? Is that something where we have to vote on that, or is that just...
I don't think so. I think that that would be an emergency power. So, if we get in a situation like that, I would have to declare an emergency to have that authority.
What's on the books now already gives her that authority, and we're tweaking that to make it clearer in the thing that's up at the city council meeting following the Cal.
I do, I am looking for the council, though, clear direction to staff of what we're looking for in the next two weeks and how we want that supported. So, I think we've got like kind of a preliminary thing. We're looking for a basic revised budget with the projected revenue adjustments and projected expenditure adjustments and addressing of the gap between the two. We're looking for Carol to take the lead on that. We're looking for additional staffing to Carol to support that effort for the next two weeks of one staff person. Is that, is that what the council is supporting this evening?
Yes.
Yes, Your Honor.
Is there any council member that is not in support of that direction to staff?
The only thing I'd add is also this freeze...
Oh, sorry.
As well as we move through this.
Okay, so we're looking for also a two-week pause on all nonessential expenditures. JD, is that clean for you?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, those are our two additional informationals. I'd now like to open it up to public comment. Do we have any public comment this evening? Here is none. We are going to close out of the...
I have additional information I wanted to share with you that plane.
Okay. Oh, okay, yes. Go ahead, JD.
We agree, but this is the, the, okay, we got it.
We got it.
Oh, you got it.
I don't have one, I don't think. Oh, I do have one, actually. I did need it. Thank you.
Mayor asked for it. I never say that.
We say buddy, we...
Because they were warm up the copy.
So, Your Honor, as this evolves, and I apologize that we didn't, we were working on some draft version of this.
So, these were emailed to the council members that are at home at 5:46. 5:46. You got an email from Allison that has this document in it.
So, this is, if you kind of turn to just that first page in the Table of Context, it kind of lays out for you what the different things are in here. Obviously, you know, we're trying to get this communication out with our plan for exposures, you know, as any workforce. We're kind of working through this. It's evolving as we go. Some information that Dirk sent us the other day was really enlightening, because someone that, he had an associate in another firm that shared some information about how they've been trying to navigate this. And obviously, on the back end of this, we've got our operational incident action plans and everything that we've got in works for our contingency plans. But this is kind of the front-facing, the forward-facing part of it that lets everybody know what we're doing as an employer to take care of all these critical operation elements. So, I wanted to share with you tonight and not ask you folks to take any action on it or anything, but we didn't get it to you in a whole lot of time, because, like I say, we've been desperately working on this, trying to piece all these things together. But I'm happy to take some input on it if you folks get a chance to take a look at it. And as, you know, it says right there at the very front of the document that we know this man, this plan will change and will have to be updated as we find out more information about this situation that we're dealing with and it evolves, and we get more and more information from the advisement of the governor and the CDC and the other overarching agencies that are responsible. So, I can answer any questions, Mayor, if anybody has any now. Otherwise, like I say, we appreciate any feedback, so...
Your Honor?
Yes, Alderman Went?
And we just got this, so have clearly not been able to read through all of these pages and stuff. But I did just notice under Critical Operations, the statement that all City of Moline employees are essential to the workforce and critical to the continuity of our operations, and it kind of goes through that they are all essential. All of our people are absolutely 100% important. But to make it a declarative statement within our thing that every single person is essential, when that's the same language that the governor is using for essential people who have to be able to be at work and do these things, where we do know that there are some things in this emergency situation, there are things within the city that we're just not going to be providing or doing. And so, I've got to, and again, I haven't read this whole thing, this being thrown on us 10 minutes before the meeting. I apologize for not being able to get through it. But that was just something, it was just a sentence I read, just because it happened to be at the top of one of the pages, that struck me as, I'm not sure if that's the, what we want to put out, because I don't know what the ramifications of saying every single employee is essential in this document is.
Let me just speak to...
Sure.
So, this is where we've had some conversations going back and forth, and I appreciate that feedback, because those are some of the questions that I asked. And so, when Dirk and Margaret and Mayor and I talked about this, is that acronym, Mayor, is it pronounced CISA, that C-I-S-A document that lines out those 14 different essential categories? I think that's what we...
Well, I think that those are, I'm trying to think of what those are called. Shoot. It's not, it's not essential. It's the critical, something, it starts with an S. I just can't think of what the word is.
It's for the, I'm sorry, it's for the, it's the definition by this Memorandum on Identification of Essential Critical Infrastructure Workers During the COVID-19 Response. And it's C-I-S-A is for the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency from Department of Homeland Security. And under the advisement of Dirk and Margaret, we lined up all the government employees that are supposed to continue working under the Governor's Act as part of these essential government functions underneath those different 14 categories that are in this guidance document. So, it's not anything, it could be fluid in motion if we decide that some of those, as we get into mission-critical elements, that the back end, you know, the back-end framework of this for our emergency operations plan has got our contingencies. So, when we lose 10% of the workforce, these are the mission-critical items, the 20%, 30%, and all the different operating elements of our mission-critical efforts. And like I say, that's a document that'll be my bible here over the next several weeks as we navigate through that. But that may change. Those definitions may change, Alderman Went, as we look at it. But we did that under the advisement of Dirk and Margaret.
But it says "all," and so that means that every single person who's employed with us falls under that criteria?
Well, what, it's the criteria, the word "essential," I understand what you're saying, because the word "essential" shows up in the Governor's Order. But that's a capital E and defined term. We're not capital, we're not using the essential workforce in the same way the governor's using it. This is about a succession plan for the people we have, whether they're on the front line of taking care of billing, or they're in the critical positions here. I understand your concern, and I don't think we're jeopardizing anything, and we're going to be talking about later some issues with respect to our workforce. But the point of this is to get a succession plan in place of how we deal if somebody here shows up at whatever level and says they've been diagnosed as having the COVID virus. We need to get something in place to start. We can tweak this certainly. I mean, it's fluid. There are 400 things delivered. While it's not ideal to get it to you 10 minutes before the meeting, tonight's the start of this. This isn't the end of this process. And when you take the words like "essential," we're not welding ourselves into some corner here by saying all the employees are essential. In fact, we've asked all the employees to continue to report to work to the extent possible while we look for teleworking and maintaining social distancing. The fact of the matter is, is that at the moment, the library's closed. The person who restocks the books, while important to the library functions, is not essential at the moment in the same way that JD is. I agree with that. But we're not talking about the governor's terms. We're talking about, in general, how we're going to respond to our workforce showing up being things. So, we can remove that first sentence. I don't think we'd lose anything. But that's not the critical part of this document, with all respect. It's trying to get in place something to tell our workforce if somebody here gets diagnosed. So, we can continue to work on it. Again, tonight's the start. But this isn't the capitalized term from the Governor's Order. And, you know, the worry is that essential workers need to have letters of transit. That kind of stuff starts. Am I essential enough where I need a letter of transit so I go to work so the police don't stop me? That's not what the governor's asked. He said local government's important in all of its functions to deliver those services to the people. Which employees, he said, is up to you. He's not made any determination. That's up to you as a council to determine which of your employees need to be here delivering services. He's not going to tell you what's best for your community. That's your decision. So, to the extent you're worried about the governor's thing, he's told you, you're in charge.
And I understand that, Dirk, and I apologize, because I haven't read through this entire thing again. But if you're saying that the governor is basically turning over that requirement to us or giving us the authority to define that capital E-essential for using that same language and saying everyone is, that's just my concern. And like I said, as I read more than six sentences in the time that I've been able to review it while we've been in this council meeting, maybe I'll understand it better. That was just, it happened to be the sentence I read, and it just concerned me a little bit.
Yeah, and certainly we can tweak all, I mean, all of this is a starting point. You know, the, my writing teacher in law school always said, we're never done writing. We're just out of time. And so, that's really where we are here. And so, we want to get this in place sooner than later, but we can certainly improve every document. And I understand what you're saying about the "all" being a, we don't want to set false expectations, and at the same time, we do want to take care of our workforce.
So, something that, in my conversations with both Allison and JD, that I think is quite urgent is to have a plan in place for when one of our employees does test positive. And they've included that in here, and I think that's helpful for not only us, our informed work, but for the employees to have an understanding of what happens next instead of, this has happened, now what do we do? And so, I really appreciate JD and Allison working through this document and coming up with that so that it can be communicated out to staff. But I think that there are definitely parts of it are more nuanced and a little bit, you know, more detailed.
My suggestion moving forward is that we get some recommendations, like removing this first sentence. I don't think we lose anything removing the first sentence from paragraph four, and then whatever other improvements council has. And then, we get it in place, and then you ratify it the next time you meet. I know you're not scheduled to meet for a couple of weeks, but fact of the matter is, is, you know, we can use the ratification that way, but let's get the improvements. We can circulate it by email without the reply all, so we don't have a meeting, and then get it done.
So, one of my concerns that I have is that we have the staff that we have, and we may have some things that come up in the community that need our municipal support. And so, I want to make sure that our employees understand that we may need them in some capacity to serve the community. And so, I want to make sure that the wording's in place that will allow us to do that. But I think that, I understand what your concern is, Alderman Went. But why don't we, why don't we take some time and read through it? Who, JD, would you like us to send comments to Allison?
I would say send them to Allison and I, if you could, because we've been, like I say, in this, you know, a lot of this is extrapolated out of a bible, a document that has all the drill-down detail of like when a site gets possibly, you know, a person has a positive ID, then what are the next steps, you know, how we isolate that site? We get it cleaned, we get it ready for reoccupation, what items have to be taken from that site? If it's a group workplace, where they relocate so their operations continue. And all that has been taking place in that. And it's like I say, in this big operational bible, the chief, you only saw he stepped out when I was here, because he is my backup, Chief Snyder is my backup in this, as the incident commander on this particular thing. And we're kind of going to activate this through that National Incident Management System guideline and kind of walk it through that way at this point. So, all that stuff's being done. So, I want you guys to all feel comfortable that, like I say, this front-facing document, this leading document has, all that detail has been populated down in behind. So, we've got a very executable mission here and a plan.
Have our city staff been informed of what happens if someone in their department is diagnosed?
They, this document will present to them then what those steps are. They've been, I mean, they've been communicated with last week three different times on this, and they, the social distancing, all those different instructions. This will be the document that actually tells them what steps the employer is going to be taking for the workforce when those processes, and it's inevitable it's going to happen.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that they are comfortable, informed proactively. Alderman Parker, is that who's speaking?
Yeah, hold on a second. Oh, yeah, I guess I am muted. So, kind of, on this same vein of thinking, I received an email from Rod Schick earlier today regarding how they're handling things on municipal operations, and it looks like, you know, really good, solid plan. But my question is, is there a way to, instead of having every employee, and I don't know exactly how they do this, punch in and punch out physically, is there a way to have someone there to do that for them? So, it's limiting the number of people that touch that apparatus all at the same time?
I'll let Allison speak to the technology part, but sure, I mean, we could, we could work through suggestions like that.
Your Honor?
Hold on just a second, Alderman Schoenmaker. Allison's going to answer the question, and then we'll go to you.
Okay.
For some, we could look at that. They'd have to have access to computers. So, more for the Public Works Municipal Services operation. What we've done is we've changed their start and end times, and then that changes their break time. So, they're not, you know, 25 or 30 people all around the time clock at one time. It's maybe 10 at a time, and 10 and a half hour later, and 10 and a half hour later. They've also installed hand sanitizer stations by each of the time clocks. So, and the managers are standing there making sure and encouraging that. The janitors are also going around on those high-touch-point areas and wiping them down more frequently than before. So, we can certainly look at that for some operations. For others, I don't know that it would be viable without buying some more computers and that, but we'll take a look at that, too.
Thank you, Allison. Alderman Schoenmaker?
I'm sure this is probably happening, but I'd like to hear confirmation. So, inter-city, intergovernmental communications. So, say, for instance, a shift that the fire department goes down and one station is taken out because we've spent several days, that station was infected. Do we have coverage? Do we have negotiations with other cities? And I'm talking beyond MABUS. How would we address those kind of situations? And I'm thinking also water pollution, water distribution.
So, yes, there's a, there's, on all the critical operations, obviously, there's 12 different, as we've identified, the 12 different essential business units that are going on that we're saying are absolutely mission-critical, water, wastewater, EMS, and then police and the different units. And yeah, every one of them has a contingency plan that includes reaching out to the neighbors, even to the point where I was sharing with the mayor yesterday that not one community or the other could supply...
or the other could supply an entire day's worth of drinking water to another, but our staff has gone out, walked through, tested every SOP and every interconnect between our neighbors, and that for the water utilities, to make sure that we could supplement them if needed or vice versa. So the chief has done that, both chiefs have done that in both of their areas, and like I say, the Bible that shows us that. So if there's, and God forbid, I talked to Representative Halpin yesterday, and I don't think this would happen, but if the Illinois National Guard all of a sudden called up our 13 folks that we have, 12 in police and one in fire that are in the National Guard, we've got our contingency plan in place for that and how we'd react and respond, and bring in neighboring resources as needed.
So, your honor, I'm going communications with these other cities?
Yeah, and all our counterparts, as Carol mentioned, that she's talking to her counterparts, I'm talking with and communicating by email with the different administrators. Allison and her HR group have, they're, I don't know if they're daily or frequently, and then the mayor and I are on different coalition conference calls. The chief's already been a part of an activated group that's come up. It's ESF 14, or 13, excuse me, but it's an activated group through the region that's all working as a unified response for police services. And I can't, EM, I'm sorry, EM. Yeah, and that, Sheriff Bustos is kind of the overarching head over that. And yeah, so all those initiatives have been activated.
Are there any other questions for J.D.?
I do have a question, just because I was kind of, I was kind of looking through this as well. Now, it might be a dumb question, but why is the library not doing drive-through, like restaurants are doing drive-through?
I can't see, I'll let Dirk speak to the details of the governor's order, but they, with the governor's order and that, they stopped that initiative as of Friday.
You're talking about the curbside?
Yeah.
So they had been doing curbside delivery, but the...
They had not been doing curbside delivery.
They started a beta. They started a beta on that.
Okay.
But the governor closed the library, so he just said, "Yeah, close it."
Okay. So then this document, where, I don't know where Alderman Wentz said something about that, it said all employees are essential, so not counting the library since he closed. So he closed libraries, but so they aren't essential employees, is what you're saying?
Well, there was the big debate about his capital E-essential and our, our general statement essential and why we have contingencies for those services.
So, for example, though, maybe, the reason I, I'm saying, your use of the word essential, the governor's use of the word essential, Alderman Wentz's use of the word essential is different. There are, we represent 72 libraries across the state of Illinois through Rails, it's called. It's an association library. There are libraries who are taking this time that they are closed to have their employees report and do things they've put off for years to get that done. One, to keep their people employed. Two, to keep their staff. And three, to forward. To those libraries, they've made the determination, under their authority of the governor's order, that their people are essential, and they are reporting for work, and they're doing jobs even though it's not lending books. What you decide to do with your library system is up to you. So for you, for me to answer what is essential or not, that's not my call. It's a possibility that library staff could still be determined by the overall arching powers here, that they are essential to getting ready to deliver the services again whenever things change.
So our, mayor, so, do, I mean, I guess, who knows? Are our library folks in there sanitizing and cleaning, you know, the book? I mean, I know there's so many books.
They're all home right now. But something that, I mean, I've been in talks with our director, Brian, and something that we may lean on our librarians for is they're great at research, and they're great at resourcing information, and we have community members that are struggling to get the information that they need to pursue unemployment claims, to pursue small business disaster funding, those types of things. And so we are talking about how they can serve our community in a different role. And so I think, you know, that's why I'm a little comfortable with describing everybody as essential, because I want to maintain the opportunity to draw on our team to serve the community as best we can serve the community during this time of crisis. So I don't think the conversation's done yet, but they are, right now, not working at all. Well, actually, that's not true. Brian is in the building, and I think Lisa's in the building, so there's two staff members that are working this week, but that's, that's kind of involving. Is there anything else, J.D.?
Nothing, unless you had any other questions. And like I say, it's, you know, we worked feverishly to try and get this forward-facing part of it done. I think we captured the different things that you had requested. If it's, if there aren't things in there, it's just an error or an omission, but we'd like to get the feedback so we can get it incorporated in there and get this out, like I say, for our employees and for the different folks to see what we're doing for our workforce.
Great.
So we can protect our community.
So, council, I'd encourage you to provide feedback if you have it.
There he is. Hi, Kevin.
We can see you now, Alderman Schoonmaker. You're behind a weird curtain. I don't know what, or you're in front of a weird curtain.
I liked it better before.
He's not listening. Okay.
And just the last thing I'd offer is that we got that telework policy on the council agenda, non-consent, and so as that comes up, I'm happy to come up also, and Allison as well, and I think we've got Margaret Kostopoulos that crafted that for us, logged in, or she's like dialed in, too, so she could speak to any questions that you might have.
That's in the council agenda?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Is there anything else for the committee at the hall? Do we have any public comment this evening?
Oh, mayor, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, Alderman.
I don't know if anyone's tried it, but as, since we're talking about all this COVID stuff, we have on our live stories the COVID-19 resource page, and I don't know if anyone's flipped over to that at all, but it's got some great resources on it. So I just wanted to remind everyone to take a look at that and maybe perhaps share it on your guys' Facebook, since it has information from the Rock Island County Health Department, employee information, applying for unemployment, World Health Organization, and Moline Services and Policy Updates, and the Nationwide Info from the CDC. So if you haven't got a chance to look at the live stories, definitely do it. It's a great resource tool.
Thank you. Without any further business of the committee in the hall, I'd like to close out the committee at the hall, and we're going to go into the council agenda. I'd like to call the council meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we will have an invocation remotely from Alderman Parker.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Our heavenly Father, we thank thee for the blessings you have provided our city. In this special time of need, we ask your special care for those caregivers of the folks who have been impacted. We ask your, your help in, in helping our residents be calm and understanding during this time of crisis, as mistakes will certainly be made, but their understanding would be helpful in making sure that we are able to protect all of our citizens. For those that have been impacted, we ask for speedy recovery, and I ask for, we ask for steady leadership of the city council as we navigate through these uncharted waters. In your name we pray. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Present.
Parker?
Here.
Wentz?
Present.
Potter?
Present.
Moyer?
Here.
Schoonmaker?
Present.
Waldron?
Present.
Berg?
Present.
Your honor, I request approval of committee of the hall and council meeting minutes of March 17, 2020. Resolutions. Council Bill 1034-2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest an agreement with Strand Associates Incorporated for professional engineering services required to model and analyze hydraulic data related to the River Drive sanitary sewer interceptor in amount not to exceed $67,800.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Berg. Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Wentz?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries.
Non-consent agenda resolutions. Council Bill 1035-2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a contract with Davenport Electric Contract Company for project number 1339 video detection systems installation in the amount of $51,749.49.
Motion to approve?
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Berg. Alderman Parker?
So, and I talked to each one of you individually over the last day here, and I contacted staff regarding this, and this is for cameras, equipment that we've already purchased, I believe, and this is for the installation of that. J.D., I guess you're probably the one to lean on here. So there were some questions regarding the loops that these are going, the cameras would take care of the loops that you pull up into, and it detects the cars there, and it changes the light accordingly, and the cameras would take that out of play. I sent an email out, and it's, and got back, the initial response was that the only thing that these cameras would be doing, because these loops are still operational, is that it would detect bicycles at this point until those loops are taken out. Follow-up question after talking to Alderman Wentz was, as we restrike these, would those loops still work for the traffic, you know, because they're in, the lanes are in a little different area? And I think that's what the previous city engineer had indicated, that we had to have these cameras because of that. I just, I guess I'm getting conflicting information, so I was hoping maybe you can help out with that.
Okay, so as I understand your question, then will the detection loops still function for the vehicle traffic once we do the lane shift?
Yes.
Okay. If there, if the placement, I can't picture the cross-section. I know that cross-section was provided either tonight on Rod's presentation or not, but if those loops are within, you know, range of proximity to that, to that lane, I would say, yes, those loops would still detect vehicles. I don't, I can't, can't picture, I'd almost want to see those cross-sections, Alderman laid one over the other, and maybe ask, you know, ask somebody, I guess, to tell me, like Josh or somebody, to tell me if they could still detect a vehicle, because I think we're going, in some of those, like on 19th and 12th, we're going to go from four full lanes to two lanes with a center turn lane, and then I think have one-directional, like multi-use path or bike lanes on each curb.
Alderman Parker, are you thinking that we could delay this installation work? Are you thinking we could not install? What are your thoughts?
I was, I was hoping to, first of all, get some information, because the information I was getting was kind of conflicting, and I was hoping to get some better information, first of all. Second of all, ultimately, because it's, you know, $50,000, if really it is just to be able to identify bikes, which typically don't stop at the stoplight until, wait for the green lights come, or for them to go through, thinking that we could at least delay this until, you know, we would absolutely have to do it, and we'd better understand our financial situation, just as we've talked about recently, only critical spending would be taking place. But I just kind of, first of all, I wanted to understand it better, and second of all, I know Mike, it looks like he has a question there, but probably delay this, because I don't think it's really a critical item on our, on our list.
Alderman Wentz?
Yeah, thank you, your honor. Yeah, I had had some of these discussions originally with Scott Hinton when he was the city engineer, and, and I went back and forth with him, and he said, "These will not work. There's no way that they will work." But it seems that we're now getting maybe some communication from, from either Laura or from J.D., that there's a possibility that they may actually work the, the existing things in the, in the ground. And so if that's the case, yeah, I, I think at the stage we're at, I would be for not paying this $50,000 to do these installations. But I guess, at minimum, what I'd like to do is for us to table this till next meeting, or us to get a clear answer on whether the loops in the street would, would still work with the driven traffic regardless if we, the cameras in or not.
Second.
I think I understand.
Is that a motion to table until we have more information?
Yeah, till next meeting.
Okay.
Tabled.
We have a motion to table for two weeks until our next meeting by Alderman Wentz, and we have a second by Alderman Berg. Roll call, please.
Sorry, I'm still ready.
Sorry.
Okay, Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Wentz?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Motion to table carries.
Can I ask, just, yeah, so I think I understand the question, and so what I'll do tomorrow is I'll ask, like Rod and Lauren reach out. I think loop detection will work for vehicles. We'll check and see if the placement of the current loops will work under this configuration and this cross-section strategy for the road diet. If they won't, and I guess, and I think, if I got the question right, then I'll probably ask also, what would it cost to just relocate detection loop technology to those lanes if we're only going to do the traffic, the motor vehicle traffic, and understand that we wouldn't have anything in the bikes? Say those have to be more rectangular or shifted one side or the other, but continue with loop detection technology? That, that may also be a possibility, that has a lower cost to still get the right effect of the road diet condensation or whatever, the lanes.
Yeah, I think we're looking for more clarification before we proceed with approval of the installation of the cameras. Was that fair, council? Thank you.
Alderman Waldron, your honor?
Yes, Alderman Waldron.
Could you also, J.D., take a look at if we install those bike lanes, are we required under the manual and uniform traffic devices to put in those detectors? I would like to know if it's something we can put off or not.
Got it.
Thank you, Alderman Waldron.
Thank you.
Moving on.
Council Bill 1036-2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to an agreement with Mid-American Energy Company for installation of electric service to the water tank site at the former Oak Glen home property in amount not to exceed
Motion to approve?
Second.
I believe we have a motion to approve from Alderman Parker. Is that correct?
Yes.
And we have a second from Alderman Berg. Is there any discussion, Alderman Parker?
So this is another one that I kind of had questions about, and Alderman Waldron, you can maybe help me with this, but Tony Lodi, hopefully you're still on the line here. So a couple of questions with this, and Alderman Waldron, help me walk, walk me through this. A couple of questions are, I know we have a $60,000 grant from the State of Illinois Commerce and Economic Development Opportunity Grant. If we were to postpone this, would that grant be able to be postponed as well, or is it a user-lose sort of situation? That's the first question. And the second question, which Alderman Waldron actually brought up, I think is an excellent question, is if we don't provide electric service to the water tower right away, is it going to cost us more down the line in perhaps maintenance or, you know, some other thing that I, I'm not a water tower expert, so I don't really know, but in some other way? Or is it just going to just sit there, and then once we do provide electricity to it, everything should come up and running? Those are my two questions.
I believe those are directed to Alderman Waldron.
Oh, no, I think they were to Tony, weren't they?
They were to Tony, but they're basically from Alderman Waldron.
You're saying Alderman Waldron? I misunderstood. Tony.
So Waldron, Waldron brought those questions up as I had a conversation with him, but I think it's Tony is the one that should be answering these, I believe.
Tony. Tony's gone. Tony's out. No Tony.
I'm happy to...
Okay, J.D., you're up.
Okay. So the grant, I wrote the grant, so probably both familiar with it, and it, there are no matching funds. We can use that grant. It does, the, we're supposed to expend those funds by June or July. What I'd recommend is if, if the concern is those matching funds to do the electric, you know, we could, we could dedicate those funds towards some improvements that need to be done on the, the tower when it was abandoned. When Oak Glen Home left, there were some things that weren't... there were some things that weren't winterized properly, and it needs some improvements, and, and we've identified what we can do to self-perform those, and the grant funds for that, and I think even get reimbursed for some of our labor to do that and use those funds. And again, there's no match that needs to come forward from the city with that.
Are you proposing that instead of electrical work, we would do some winterization work?
If you, if you, we did that, we'd do improvements to the structure, to the tower, that would ultimately have to be done, and then do some, yeah, yeah, we would use the grant funds for different improvements to the tower, and postpone the electrical installation if that was counsel's direction.
Your Honor.
Yeah, Alderman Skoomaker?
Here we go down kind of another rabbit hole. How much, you know, we didn't know about the electrical, now we don't know about how much these things are going to cost. What else is there? I, I keep questioning if this was a good pursuit. There's no water line to it now. We are spending money that we weren't expecting to spend, and now we're hearing tonight that there's more maintenance to do that's going to cost additional funds.
Well, there were funds budgeted to do some of those improvements, and then we secured the grant. The electric, if you remember Tony talking, and I wish he could speak to some of that, I wasn't in those electric meetings, but the electric, they, there's some kind of Tri-Delta-type electrical service that was.
Understand, but we didn't know any of those things when we agreed to take this on. Usually, you know, you kind of explore those things, and you have an understanding of what the additional costs are going to be coming down the road. Those, we didn't know those things.
No, the other, the other ones that I'm talking about, we did know, and those were budgeted improvements, so that's what I'm saying, is I, I would shift these grant funds towards that, if we, you know, we're not going to use the electrical. But I'm, and the answer to the other question, I think that Alderman Parker asked, was that's the cost to do the electrical now, until, until we put that into service and make a connection to it, then we wouldn't need that electrical to put the tower into service. Don't know what that cost would be in the future, if it was a year from now, or two years from now, or further. So, but, but I would say, yeah, we can, we can hold off on that electrical installation if the tower's not in service yet.
Alderman Berg?
I was just wondering, I mean, because so many, so many things are changing and happening, has anyone made a call to the Department of Commerce of Economic Opportunity to see if that grant can be pushed out a little bit?
I, I have not.
Do you think maybe that we could have that report by next time? Thank you.
No, you're, you're making.
Your Honor.
The DCEOs on the front line, determining which businesses are essential to stay open and which aren't. The wait time, just to get an answer for that, for all DCEOs, over three hours. They're not going to be looking at anything else for.
Okay. So, I want to try to understand the counsel's concern. So, this is DCO, is that right? Okay, and for some reason, the electrical wiring came up in front of what the planned renovations were for the water tower. Is that true? Am I understanding that right? So, you knew you had to do some renovations to the tower when you procured it?
Correct.
Right.
Because we had it all evaluated.
Why did the electrical connection come up in front of those other planned services?
The electrical was there, the electrical was in place at the capacity needed to do it, Mid-America, and I don't know, I probably should let Tony speak to this, if you want to know the details about that Tri-Delta thing, but as they worked on what's absolutely necessary to, like, reestablish that, they said that the facility, you know, the electrical lines that were there for Oak Glen, they don't, they don't serve that anymore, they don't support that service anymore, that Tri-Delta, three phase.
So, I kind of understand that, but why did it bump up in front of the other planned maintenance things for the tower?
No, no, we still, there's still funds budgeted for that. What I'm, what my suggestion was, is if you didn't want to lose the grant funds, and you didn't want to make this electrical installation, I, I would say that I would work towards our staff using those grant funds towards that. I was just trying to offer up a solution for you, Your Honor, to use those grant funds and not let them expire if we can't extend this date to try and use them at a later time.
So, does that make sense to the counsel that's here? Do you understand what he's proposing? We have that capability in the grants, we can do whatever we want to with them, as long as it's associated with the water tower?
Yep.
Okay. Alderman Parker?
So, I guess it goes back to my initial question, was if we don't hook up the electricity, is it going to deteriorate the water tower more, or is it really, doesn't make any difference to it?
I, I would say no, not, no, we don't, the electrical service could be postponed until we make the connection.
Alderman Parker?
As a follow-up also, is there a match to this for us to take the $60,000? Is there a certain match? I'm not 100% sure, I don't remember, if we were going to do something other than electrical?
There's, there's no match required.
Alderman Went?
Is, is this grant specifically only for this tower, or can we use that $60,000 for something else in the city?
I wrote the grant for the tower, you know, towards making the improvements to, to reestablish its purpose.
Okay. Would you also be able to give us, because I, I think I've got an email someplace where we asked originally, when we were purchasing this, what other costs there were going to be associated with this tower? I, I understand you keep saying, "Well, it was budgeted this year," but when we originally, to Alderman Skoomaker's point, when we originally took this on, we had asked the questions on what other costs are associated with owning this, and it, it seems like there's quite a few things that, like this winterization, this is the first time I've heard anything about that. This electrical, I think, was, was never mentioned originally. Would, could you guys provide what those, all these additional costs are associated with it? So, we, we feel that we understand this entire project, rather than bits and pieces nibbled, and like, next year, then we'll just budget another, you know, about $150,000 sporadically through the, the budget, and it won't see, and then these just keep to, keep adding up. We would really appreciate that, I think.
Yeah, understood, and I, I know there was a report on that, and I know some of the items were talked about, like recoding, and when that needs to take place, the estimates for that, but I, I don't have any of that stuff by memory, so we'll get that to you.
Alderman Berg?
So, is this weatherization part of the restoration of the, of the?
Yeah, I guess maybe I wasn't clear. When it, when they took that old nursing home down, I think they left it, I think just some, you know, things were damaged by not having, you know, the water drained out properly and doing some things like that. And so, like I say, that's what I'd recommend, if we were going to use that grant money, try and, you know, put it towards some of those things.
But that's, that's a, that's a, a restoration by doing the weatherization?
Yes.
Okay, because the grant, and I know Alderman Went, you asked, said that the grant funds will be used for costs associated with the restoration of Oak Glen Elevated Water Tank located at 112195th Street in the City of Moline. So, I just wanted to verify that it was for the restoration.
So, the motion on the floor is to approve this item. I'm not feeling like we're going in that direction. Does someone want to amend that motion to expend it some other way? Because we're going to get into a situation where we won't have time to do anything with the grant money. It has to be spent by when, JD?
June 30th.
It has to be spent by June 30th.
And we've had it since July 1st, so I guess my question is, how come we haven't done with it, done anything with it prior? Sorry, Mayor, I should have asked you.
Your Honor.
Hold on a second. JD, can you answer that question, why, we don't know?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna probably say task interference, but I, I'm not sure.
Okay. Alderman, I'm sorry, I didn't catch, was it Alderman Went that wanted to speak?
That was Alderman Potter.
Alderman Potter?
Yeah, I think the appropriate thing to do is just to vote no on the council resolution, because it's in agreement with Mid-American Energy, so we wouldn't fall for on the contract, and then staff can utilize the $60,000 to refurbish the tank, or weatherize it, whatever terminology they're using.
Is there anybody else that wants to make a comment before we vote on the original motion? Alderman Parker?
So, I don't disagree with you, Alderman Potter. It looks like we're going in a different direction. I would just like to know from staff what they're planning on doing, because, you know, but I also understand, we're in a, we are under a time crunch also. So, would it be better to vote this down, and then make a motion to direct staff to come back with $60,000 worth of renovations, or do you want to, should we table this and have them come back with it? What would be the best way to do that?
Do you have a preference, Jake, in how we navigate this situation?
I'm gonna look at Dirk, I guess, to see if, because if we have to, the council action to, you know, redirect those funds or whatever, I guess I'll, I'll look to him for that. Otherwise, I think that's what we plan on using them for, what, you know, the grant was, like I say, for the tower improvements.
So, we knew we had the grant in the budget, we knew we had the grant at the time of our budget preparation. Was this item supported in the budget? Did we show this grant money going towards this electrical in the budget?
At the time of the budget, it probably just showed the grant funds going towards the improvements to the tower, you know, for the restoration work towards the tower.
Okay, so you have counsel's approval for that. Dirk, what would you need to get from the council in order to proceed with the planned improvements outside of this electrical?
I don't have, the question is about using the, the grant funds to do the other improvements?
Yeah. My understanding from JD is that it probably wasn't specified in the budget that we were doing these specific electrical improvements with this particular contractor? But I don't, I don't know what else they're going to do that's not going to be a contract.
Yeah, so Allison was asking the same kind of question, which is, if we vote this down, can we never come back with this? And the answer to me is that the grant, if it's broad enough, as JD says, that it can be any work on it, it can be some combination of electric and other things down the road, maybe, so.
But our down the road is only June, then we lose that grant. That's the problem.
Well, we, we should be able to get direction, I mean, the next meeting is where JD would have to bring you an expenditure of $60,000 on something else, right, unless it's in the budget for.
Your Honor.
Alderman Went?
I, I understand the, the conversation, and I understand the frustration that, that some of the other aldermen have about how this, this is sparring a little bit, but when we're looking at it, I may be coming around the other way, that says, hey, if, if we have to bring this electrical service out there anyway, because we've got sunk cost into this thing, and we're, we're going to wind up doing this south of the, the airport, and, and I think, long-term, even though we've got some heartburn on little things, that we want this eventually done, and it needs to be done to, to expand out there, that really, we're only putting $13,000 of, and I think that this is out of the Water Department fund, to get something that has to be done, out there, done. So, I, I, I guess I'm, I'm feeling whether we, we do it now, or we do it in two weeks, I think I'm, if it's, if it's only $13,000 out of the Water Department to get something that is going to have to be done one way or another, I'd much rather do it this way than swallow a pill a year or two from now, and where we've got to come up with now, $80,000, or whatever the, the case is.
Does anybody else? Alderman Parker? Oh, sorry, Alderman Moyer was next.
I was just thinking that they had $85,000 budgeted in this account for the weatherization and for the additional, for the electrical. So, if, if you use the $60,000 for the weatherization, then you just put the electrical off till next year, when things are better. So, if we, if we voted no for this, could they just go ahead and then just do the work?
Yeah, I was just asking JD about whether or not there was a competitive bidding requirement for the grant, and he said he would use the $60,000 to self-perform other work on the tank, so that it would be our forces, and then it'd just be procuring materials.
So, my challenge is, do we have the, the staffing available to self-perform on the weatherization?
To do today. I don't know what the situation we're facing right now, whether that's going to continue, because these crews, obviously, we don't know over the next few weeks how it's going to be, and they're part of our mission, critical operations, other plant mechanics are folks that can also operate the plant, so I've got them in my critical action plan as people that will supplement plant operators. So, it gets a little challenging to anticipate, but if, if I can, so when JD said, "I'll get back to you with the report from DCEO about whether we can extend out the deadline for doing it," I, one of the habits of highly effective people is to gather information while you can, and until you have to make a decision. I think that you, two weeks, which is the next meeting, might be the opportunity to make that decision and find out if DCEO will let us expend this money later because of all of the closures that are going on. And then, I think they'll have breathing room, because by then, we'll have gotten through the order about whether this, that, and the other business is or isn't essential under the governor's order. So, I think if two weeks is the time period, maybe the best thing to do is table this to the next council meeting, which is in two weeks, and have, and we'll report back with whatever information we have, and if we don't have any additional information, JD can also then by now have a better understanding of whether he can get the work done with his own forces. So, that would be my recommendation.
So, if we table it, then we preserve the option of executing the electrical contract? Does the counsel understand that? To your point, Alderman Skoomaker, I understand where you're at with this, but depending on which path we take, if we have our own staff do some weatherization, or we execute this electrical, it doesn't make the electrical go away, and it doesn't make the weatherization go away. It is additional cost than what we, was disclosed to us. Alderman Skoomaker?
I'd like, that's fine. I'd like, like Mike Alderman Went had asked for, kind of just a, a global accounting, so we know where this is going. It seems like we're getting a lot of different direction on this. So, I'd like to know, are we going to spend $150,000 on this? Is that going to be the end of it? Are we, are we going to continue to find problems and go back to those kind of original emails?
So, to focus, counsel back, we have a motion on the floor right now to approve this contract in a second. How would you like to proceed? Would you like to proceed with a vote? Alderman Parker?
Your Honor, I would make a motion to table this, this for two weeks, allowing staff to go back and find out if there is a extension available to this grant, and then make a decision at that point as to how to proceed forward.
Second.
We have a motion to table by Parker, a second by Alderman Moyer. Roll call, please.
Alderman Williams, I'm sorry, Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Skoomaker?
Aye.
Walton?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight i's, no n's?
That motion carries, sorry. That motion carries, thank you.
Council Bill 1037-2020, Resolution Establishing Certain Practices and Procedures for the City of Moline During the COVID-19 State of Emergency.
Motion to consider 1037-2020?
Second.
We have a motion by, I'm sorry, was it Alderman Parker? Motion by Alderman Parker, and a second by Alderman Berg. Is there any discussion on this item?
I'm sorry, that was my mistake. Again, Alderman Parker, we don't need a consider vote on a resolution, just on an ordinance, so it's just.
It's not your fault, Janine. I meant to say, motion to approve.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Never your fault.
Alderman Parker, and is that clarification good for you, Alderman Berg?
Yes.
Good. So, we have a motion and a second by Alderman Berg, is there any discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Skoomaker?
Aye.
Walton?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight i's, no n's?
That motion carries.
Council Bill 1038-2020, Resolution Rescinding the Intergovernmental Agreement Entered Into Between the Department of Healthcare and Family Services and the City of Moline Pursuant to Council Bill Resolution Number 1133-2019, and Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to Execute an Test to a Revised Intergovernmental Agreement Between the Department of Healthcare and Family Services and the City of Moline, to Allow the City to be Eligible for Supplemental Payments for Covered Ambulance Services Pursuant to the Terms of the Intergovernmental Agreement, and Authorizing All Appropriate City of Moline Officers and Staff to Do All Things Necessary to Complete Each of the City's Recovery. And Authorizing All Appropriate City of Moline Officers and Staff to Do All Things Necessary to Complete Each of the City's Responsibilities Pursuant to the Intergovernmental Agreement. Again, this is not for consideration, just for approval.
Motion to approve 1038-2020.
Second.
There's a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Berg. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries.
Council Bill 1039-2020, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to Execute in Test to Memorandum of Understanding Between Quad Cities Running Club Incorporated and the City of Moline Setting forth the Terms for Annual Funding for the Quad Cities Marathon and Designating Center Station 1200 River Drive, Moline As Location for Marathon Start and Finish Lines With Said Memorandum of Understanding to be in effect for a Period of 15 Years.
I'll take a wing on this one and say motion to approve 1039-2020.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Berg. Is there any discussion on this item? So there were some changes, I think, since the last time council has seen it. Is that correct? I don't think council has seen the changes other than what was presented in the, do you want to go through those?
Off the top of my head, they are, it's 15 years, not 20. The clawback is complete so that if they ever leave, it's not pro rata, they have to pay back the full $20,000. But the quid pro quo for that was that we funded them for the 15 years as opposed to half of the 20 or 10 that was original. Those were the big changes in the agreement.
So there was one more change. The marathon wanted both Friday and Saturday night allocated by the Taxpayer Center. And the cost associated with that was about one out of every three years. They would be able to book that with a revenue of approximately $100,000. And so in talking to that, the 30,000 year is unreasonable. But we were able to negotiate with the marathon that they could incentivize their attendees for the inside event on Saturday morning to set up after midnight on Friday so that, and they would compensate those vendors with $2,500 kind of slush fund that the city would provide for offsetting that deal. Does that make sense? So you don't get a setup on Fridays like the marathon would like inside. They have to wait until midnight, about once out of every three years. And when that happens, when taxider books Friday night, the city would be on the hook to give them a fund of $2,500 to distribute to their vendors to sweeten that deal. Does that make sense? Y'all okay with that? Okay, so there were some changes, but just as long as y'all know what you're voting for. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries.
Council Bill 1040-2020, Resolution Approving a City of Moline Policy Entitled Telework Policy and Procedure.
Motion to approve 1040-2020.
Second.
Second.
Was that Parker?
Yes.
Okay, we had a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on the telework policy? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries.
That is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Fantastic. Now I'd like to open it up to council business. Is there any business on Alderman Williams' side? Is there any business on Alderman Moyer's side? I'd like to introduce an idea to the council that I would like for you to consider. And that is that we have established the I-74 Bridge Loan Program Up to $10,000 at 1% interest with a five-year payback for people impacted by the construction on the bridge. I would also like to propose a second program that would have a $5,000 limit, 1% interest rate, payback of five years. And that would be allocated to businesses in Moline that have been impacted by COVID-19. I would like to have the council consider an expedited execution of those loans That would give a small subcommittee authority to approve those loans and get that money out to those businesses immediately. And by immediately, I mean by the end of this week or next week, that quickly. And so I wanted some discussion of council of what your thoughts are. If you have any concerns regarding that, open it up to the council. Alderman Parker?
Your Honor, are you thinking of a maximum number of initial applicants would be accepting on this?
Yeah, I'm thinking about allocating $50,000 from the current funds available in the revolving loan fund program. And so $50,000 would be at maximum 10 businesses. If someone were to desire to take less than the $5,000 maximum, it could allow for additional businesses. But that would be, it would be at least 10 businesses that could be impacted. And then I think that we could revisit it in two weeks at our next council meeting, depending on how the program goes. Alderman Parker?
And just a second follow-up, what kind of guarantees are we looking for on this?
I was going to propose the exact same guarantees that we're looking for in the I-74 construction loans. And that is a business commitment as well as personal, Dirk can maybe describe what that is exactly. But they'd be promissory notes. They'd be similar.
Yeah, the business commits, signs a promissory note and it's personally guaranteed by ownership interest.
The difference would be the approval process through the revolving loan fund committee. I don't think that we have time to execute it that way. So it would be instead at a temporary committee level. Alderman, when?
Yeah, I'd like to add to it that it would be actually interest-free during the COVID-19 shutdown if their businesses are affected. Because taking a loan out now and then having to add a, so interest-free and non-payment on principle until, say, one month after the governor's, I guess, shelter in place is relieved. I don't know. I'll leave it to Dirk to what that.
Here's how, if it matched what we did on the bridge program, because Alderman Schoonmaker and I refined this. So if you're talking about a five-year payback with a balloon payment and we were talking about 1% interest, it wasn't due till the anniversary, just to remind them that they have a payment coming due at the end. It'd be 50 bucks a year from the date of the loan and then 50 bucks each anniversary. So I think that that would, you know, nobody's gonna have to pay anything during the COVID. But at the one-year anniversary, really as a reminder that you've got a balloon payment in a few years, you have to do it. So that, we would do it. My only question, Mayor, for you is twofold. Who's the committee? And then also, what's the criteria for this, for the businesses to qualify?
So I'd be looking for the criteria to be set loosely. What I'd like to, I'd like to give the committee some latitude on that. But what I would want to focus on are businesses that have been determined to be non-essential businesses that are dramatically impacted or restricted businesses. So I would think that the businesses that would be of especially strong interest to our municipality would support are businesses like restaurants, bars, salons, barber shops, massage establishments, those businesses, retail, small retails. But I want to focus on the small business side. So I'm looking for locally owned businesses that are not only critical to provide this type of funding, to keep them in a position that they will be able to reopen when COVID restrictions are lifted, but also are critical to our community and are an important part of our community. So that would.
But no minimum or maximum employee thing?
I don't think that's appropriate, but I'm open to the council.
What was Dirk's question there? No minimum or maximum?
On the bridge one, as I got the notes from staff, it was 15 or fewer employees. I'm just asking if you wanted a thing.
I don't think so, because I think that that would restrict a lot of our restaurants. Alderman Berg?
I actually talked to Monster Sewing, who just left the mall because of the rent and opened up their own building, or bought their own building on 41st Street near Panera, the old Rica. And he said that they're doing, I think they sew on the police badges or something, police and fire, and are starting to sew masks for healthcare. I don't know. Is that like an essential business, would you say? Because like I said, they just moved and he was talking about, well, we just bought an $8,000 sign, not knowing that this was gonna happen. Is that someone that could benefit from this?
Well, I would think that if they have a robust business because of what has happened, that they probably wouldn't be one of our keys. But I don't know that to be sure, you know?
That's why I was asking.
I mean, normally, I would assume they would be put out of business, but if they're being redefined as essential, I'm not sure that's who we're looking for. We're looking.
No, 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 they're not, they're not being redefined as essential. They're making themselves. They're like doing, they're doing masks on their own just to donate.
But if we have 10 loans to give, $5,000 each, I think that what the mayor's suggesting, and I just want to clarify this, it's people whose revenue stream has been impacted and decreased or taken away due to COVID. That's really the issue, right?
Did I understand at some point, this is, your intention was to target this at downtown?
That was only the bridge program. This one is larger, right?
I would, I would expand it to the entire Moline footprint. My vision was, I know that there are some businesses that aren't going, they're going to make a decision on whether or not they are gonna exist anymore in the next couple of weeks. And so what I'm trying to do is throw them out a safety line so that they can make the decision, that they can navigate this and continue on being a business in Moline. My motivation is that we would spend that much money trying to recruit a new business. So we're better off investing in our existing businesses and trying to give them a bridge to survive this situation.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Is it going to be a first time for servers or a period to apply?
So what I'm thinking is, we will probably promote it. This is my vision for a committee. I'm thinking Jeff Manis is probably the most connected to our business community. And to send him out there and try to track down the people that most need it. And then I'd like to lean on Alderman Schoonmaker. I think that he has the background in financing that would be helpful. And then also turn to Alderman Parker because of his exposure to the Moline Center in the downtown area. He's probably the most connected to businesses of my council as well. So I would lean on them to provide some guidance and direction to Jeff Manis for the execution. And then we would lean on Dirk for making sure that we have everything legally. And then we can regroup in a couple of weeks and see, you know, maybe nobody wants it, but maybe people do. And then we've got a list of people that want to participate. And then we can make a decision of how much money we want to invest in our businesses during this time of need.
Yeah, I think that to answer that one precise question, I would recommend to that committee that the mayor outlined. If that's where we're headed, a time period for applying. Give everybody the chance to get this out there, disseminate, look, this is what Moline is doing for its business community. And then give them some time to apply. It won't be a lengthy application, but still, that does give everybody a chance to apply. And then the committee will just have to do the best they can to sort it out.
But to push back on that, I'm not looking for a big marketing period because we need to get the money in the hands of the businesses by the end of this week or next week. And so that doesn't really accommodate, you know, making sure that everybody knows about the opportunity. It's gonna be pretty fast. Alderman Parker?
Is there a way we can put an exception on there for Class K licensed establishments from applying?
Done.
Prohibited. Gambling is prohibited. Anybody else? Any further discussion? I'd like for, to have a vote on this to make sure that the council's aligned with this plan since we would be allocating $50,000 potentially to it.
Do you want a motion?
I make a motion to move forward with the loan program as described.
Second.
We have a motion from Alderman Parker and a second from Alderman Berg. Is there any further discussion on this? Roll call, please, Janine.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you very much for supporting that. I appreciate it.
One more final word, Mayor, before we leave this topic.
Alderman Schoonmaker's got something too.
Madam Clerk, in two weeks, we need, at the next meeting, we need to ratify this.
Okay.
Alderman Schoonmaker, did you have something you wanted to discuss?
Your Honor, we had a, you and I had a brief discussion. You want me to bring that up now regarding? Okay, so council, there is, oh, through bridge investments, there's the possibility that they've had a loan that's paid off early. It's part of a large pool of money that they had. And it could become available to be used in a program just like what we talked about. It would be in cooperation probably with the City of Rock Island and the City of Moline. There's four years left on the loan. It's about $800,000 that was prepaid. Bridge, this is, this is very preliminary, but potentially would make about a half a million dollars available for similar type of funding, probably in the $10,000 to $30,000 range. And work with Rock Island and Moline to get that money out in a very, very quick fashion. In order to do that, the council would have to create a, well, let's call it a loan loss reserve. So we would have to fund that because this money has to be paid back. The rate on it would be 2.875, which is the existing note rate. There's still hoops to jump that it would have to be reallocated. But basically, if we could do that, we would create some kind of a, that loan loss reserve. And it's speculative at this point what size it would be. But if Rock Island participated and we participated, we probably would fund around $40,000 into that. That money would be at risk that if, you know, if there were losses that people didn't pay back over the four years, it could be at risk. But again, it would go to help retain businesses in Moline. And basically, what I'm looking for is kind of a nod or a thumbs up or not, that we would be interested in pursuing it. If so, I'll continue to work with Bridge to do so.
Are there any comments? Alderman Waldron?
I think that was a thumbs up.
Agreed.
Was it a thumbs up? Oh, I couldn't tell. You're in the dark, Alderman Waldron. We have thumbs up from Alderman Potter. Did you have a comment?
No, I'm fine.
Anybody on the council? I think that we're very supportive of that. Sorry, did you mention what you thought our reserve would be?
Probably $40,000, I think, in that range. It's very speculative, but that seems reasonable.
Yes, please proceed. Thank you so much, Alderman Schoonmaker, for that opportunity. Is there any other council business? Like to open it up to staff. Is there anything that staff would like to address, council? Is there any public comment this evening? Alderman Berg, do you have anything?
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, 5 I L C S 120/2 C 2. And Appointment Employment Compensation Discipline Performance or Dismissal of Specific Employees, 5 I L C S 120/2 C 1.
Second. There a second?
Do we have a second?
It's not.
We have a second by Alderman Schoonmaker? Is that right?
Yes, yes.
So we have a motion by Alderman Berg and a second by Alderman Schoonmaker. Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. So I'd now like to clear the meeting. I believe Margaret's on the line. Is that true?